Let me check, yeah, there's no, um, no hands raised on this. So, is there any, anybody want to discuss this? Or can we go straight to the sec, uh, having the second reading conducted? Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the second reading?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 20-2208 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending City Code Chapter 2.88 Audit Committee 100 Duties, Powers, and Responsibilities.
Great. Um, is there a motion?
I would move this item.
I'll second.
And, uh, let's see, I guess I need to say something such as, um, I'm moved that we, um, not this.
Conduct the reading and enact it, right?
That the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading of this code change? And that, um, that it constitute the, oh dear, I'm lacking my language.
Help!
Read the title of ordinance number 0-2208 by title only, and that the city clerk's reading would constitute the second reading thereof?
Exactly. Thank you so much.
Certainly.
At least somebody's having fun. Okay.
Councilmember Chow?
Uh, who's seconded?
Uh, Mayor Sharp.
I seconded him. Alright.
I, Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
And just circling back to see if Councilmember Chow is...
Yeah, she just unmuted herself.
Aye.
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so next we have the...
Um, I believe we need another motion to enact.
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved that... You always forget that. Okay. And the number of the, uh, the ordinance again is?
It is 20-2208.
I move that that ordinance be enacted. I will second.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
We'll go to the video after the break.
Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. Now we are on to item 18, the second reading of ordinance adding Chapter 2.20.120 to the Cupertino Municipal Code, requiring online or electronic filing of campaign statements.
And there is no staff report again, Mr. Mayor, because there were no changes from the first reading.
Okay, so Madam City Clerk, can you, uh, well, I make a motion that, now, now it's contagious with, uh, what Rod did, to conduct the second reading by title only, is that...
I, would you like me to first conduct the second reading?
Yes.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 20-2209 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, adding City Code Section 2.20.120 Electronic Filing to Title II Administration and Personnel relating to electronic filing of campaign statements.
Wonderful. Okay, so, where am I now? I gotta go back down. Okay.
I just need a motion, um...
Right.
Title of ordinance number 20-229 by title only, and that the city clerk's reading would constitute the second reading thereof?
Right, I say that. Okay.
And I second that. Okay. God, thank goodness Kirsten's on the J here.
Councilmember Chow?
Oh, aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now we need a motion to enact it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I move that we enact this ordinance.
I'll second.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so we are on to item 19, um, my favorite, hearing to approve a lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels resulting from abatement of public nuisance, weeds and/or brush, for the annual weed and brush abatement program. So, Madam City Attorney, um, I believe there's an issue here that we need to deal with. Are you there Heather?
Yes, well, does, does any council members wish to recuse themselves from this item?
So, I'd like to separate the item of my property from the rest. I'd like to speak on that item.
So, the, uh, coun, so the process then is to segment the decision here, which means Councilmember Chow would recuse herself and, um, not participate in the meeting regarding, um, the assess, approving the lien assessment for her private residence, uh, which is the basis of recusal, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong? And then, um, council would make that discuss, have that discussion, um, make a decision regarding that property, and then return to discuss the remaining properties, um, on the assessment list with participation of Councilmember Chow.
Okay. So, Councilmember Chow, um, if you can leave the meeting temporarily?
So, I, I will make a public comment, how do I do that?
Uh, so, so, right, she, um, uh, she is allowed to speak on the item that is of, that affects her property as to how it affects her only, and, um, so she, yeah, this is a little awkward. Let's pretend you're leaving the dais and going down to the public comment session. So, you may raise your hand to, for public comment as, um, uh, as any other member of the public.
As a resident, correct.
Yes. So, should she completely sign out of this meeting and re-sign up as a resident to...
No, I don't think that's necessary. I think she's, she stated she's recusing herself, and so...
Hopefully that is not necessary.
I, so, I haven't stated I'm recusing myself.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, or say whatever you want.
So, do I need a vote to separate the item first?
Uh, no.
No? So, okay, so now it's, so I'm recusing, um, myself on this item that's related to my property.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so...
Mayor, would you like me to review the staff report to so...
Yes, I would.
Okay, great. So, this is the annual assessment hearing for the county to be reimbursed for any costs of abatement associated with the weed and brush abatement programs. The purpose of the weed and brush abatement programs are to protect homes, our community, and the environment from potential fire hazards, including wildfires, through voluntary compliance. The county's Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency, the Weed Abatement Program, inspects parcels that have been declared a public nuisance and included in the program throughout the year. County Fire also runs a concurrent program for hazardous brush abatement. Abatement work is ordered by an inspector on properties when the minimum fire standards have not been satisfied, or if the owner has requested that the county contractor perform the necessary work. The abatement charges include any contractor work that has been performed and a county administrative fee. These costs are included on the parcel owner's property tax statement as a special assessment. And, um, Mo Comrie, the Weed Abatement Program Manager, is available to answer any of your questions.
Okay, um, so, you know, every time we have this, it's controversial, um, so I just, again, would like it explained to everyone, including all the residents on the call, the difference between, I mean, what happens when you're put on this list, how long you're on the list, uh, how much it costs you to be on the list even if you've done your own work and had your weeds abated, and when you come off the list. So, Mo, can you explain that?
Uh, yes, I can. Properties are placed on the list, one, only when their properties are found to be non-compliant with the minimum fire safe standards during the fire season. Once a property is placed on the list, they remain on the list until they demonstrate three consecutive years of voluntary compliance. For every year that the property's on the list, it will be responsible for the initial inspection fee. This year, that fee is $101. The fees change annually as it is a cost recovery fee, which is dependent on number of parcels, and, and other factors that have to be calculated yearly. They're approved by the, the Board of Supervisors, and then, of course, given to the City Council prior to the season beginning, uh, and then noticed to all of the property owners at the beginning of each year. Once a property has had three years, three, three consecutive years of voluntary compliance and removed from the program, another way to be removed is to build and landscape in such a manner as to remove the threat of fire hazard on the property. Contact my office, we'll verify that those conditions are met, and then we can remove a property at that point as well.
Oops, even if it's not three years?
If they've removed the threat, there's no need to keep the property on the program.
I see. Okay. Um, I want, is every city in the county, do they subscribe to this, or is it optional?
Uh, there are 12 cities that participate. Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and the town of Los Altos don't participate, but that's primarily because they don't have a lot of open space, and these, this is handled mostly by their code enforcement.
I see. Okay. Very good. Um, okay, so do any other council members have any questions about this before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none, we have, um, three hands raised for public comment on this. First, we will go to...
And can we clarify that this is just the discussion of the single property on the list at this point? And we can take public comment on the remaining properties?
Okay, I'm sorry, we're just discussing that one property at this time. Okay, um, so everyone else, hold, hold, hold your horses until we, um, uh, deal with this one property, and I will allow, um, Liang Chow to speak. Welcome, Liang Chow.
Hello, hi, I just emailed a photo of my property that I took this afternoon to the city clerk. Did the clerk receive it?
One moment, and I will pull that up, um... Okay, just one second while it appears. Can you see that?
No. The photo.
It's white, no photo loaded.
There's no photo?
No. White space.
Um, hmm, I can see it on my screen, uh, let me, let me try this a different way.
All right, oh, we almost had it.
Oh, you did?
Well, now, maybe that was something else, okay. Try it again.
Okay, so, sorry, let's see... Okay, so I can...
Oh, yeah, um, okay, well, except we have a bunch of photos now we're seeing.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, I...
Scroll down a little bit.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, so this is this afternoon, and, um, so I think, yeah, last year, um, we had not cleaned up the lawn, and now, as soon as I got the letter, as I show, I've shown the council last time, we trimmed the trees, and then the, the ground is now maintained. And, uh, so it is pretty, I think this program is pretty, um, it's based on punishment, because you are not allowed to even slip once, there is no warning. And even if I immediately corrected it, uh, the county seems to think that, they insist on doing the work to inspect the property for three whole years. For doing, I think it's, this is a waste of taxpayer dollars, even if it's based on cost recovery, um, it's really unnecessary. So, I request the council to take my property off the list, because, um, as you can see that, okay, I'm warned, now I know that I need to maintain it, and what's the point of putting this for three years? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Chow. Uh, I mean, Resident Chow. So, let's bring it back to council for this particular, um, this particular property. Um, you know, I, I am torn here because, you know, I agree with, um, the resident that I think that this program should, you know, even if it costs more, it, there should be a way where you don't get put on the list, um, until, the first time until you've had a chance to correct the problem. I've heard, been in this same meeting many, many, many times, and I've heard the same rationale, and I understand it, it's cost recovery, it would cost too much to send someone out to first say, "Hey, you're out of compliance, be in compliance, we'll come back and inspect it again, and then if you're out of compliance, you get put on the thing for three years." I think that would be fairer, um, but that's not the way the program is right now, and, you know, if we wanna put it on our agenda to change it or to opt out like the other cities do, that, that's up to us, um, to do. But for now, you know, unfortunately, I would not favor removing, you know, this property from the, you know, from the list, um, it just has to time out after three years, I'm sorry. Uh, and anybody else?
I'm, I'm happy to, to weigh in, you know, I, I think the council has heard me in previous ones, and that is, I, I see these small city lots that are predominantly concrete, and the, the difference between them versus the urban areas where they don't even have sidewalks, and there's all kinds of vegetation. I, I'm amazed, I'm surprised that we pick at these houses where it's predominantly concrete, and to try and think that, wow, this is gonna be a fire hazard that is significant, could somebody throw their cigarette in the bushes? I'm sure they do. But, the amount of fuel to cause a fire to, uh, destroy, uh, a dwelling, I think that's really pushing it. And again, distinguishing it from the urban areas where, you know, the house may be on an acre, and it may be close to the house, is perfectly fine, the, you know, the gravel driveway and things like that, no sidewalk, gravel, but then there's all this pasture-type area with, with unmanaged, uh, growth, um, yes, I, I definitely think we need to be on top of those, and this program, I think, does a good job of, of, uh, looking at those areas and doing something that if they didn't do it, we would have to do it. But I do think that when we start moving into the very suburban area with sidewalks, I think there needs to be something that's a, a little bit easier on our community, on our residents. And by all means, if, if a weed abatement officer truly feels that, uh, there's enough of an issue there, then, you know, notify the resident, put the, put the card on the, uh, on the, uh, doorknob, and if it's not corrected, you know, feel free on, you know, to come back by, and if it's not corrected, then bring it to us. But I do think there needs to be notification, allow the, uh, community resident to address the issue, no different than, you know, um, you know, any other type situation that, you know, hey, we're all wanting to, to play by the rules and be fair and treated fairly, um, without getting penalized, uh, like that, so. So, I, I, I look at the picture, and to me, it just doesn't speak of a three-year probationary period of time, so, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Darcy, do you want to weigh in?
Yes, I will just say I have a lot of sympathy for this resident, as well as other residents that feel that the process is, uh, one where they should be allowed to construct a remedy, at the same time, it's the process that we have in place, uh, there are cost considerations here. I would support a reevaluation of that to see what is feasible and will keep us safe, but at this time, I am, uh, compelled to support the process, um, so those are, those are my thoughts on it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Rod?
Yeah, I, I agree with Darcy and, and the mayor on this. You know, if, if we wanna design a better process, my suggestion is we, um, have city staff work on that in conjunction with a county, but that's not what this is tonight. So, I think, I just wanna ask Mo, uh, before we move on. Uh, Mo, um, is this property like, like the others appropriately on this list for its three-year period? Is there any, uh, do you have any, any comments on, uh, our action tonight which would apparently retain it on the list?
I have two comments. One is that we actually did review this for inclusion in the program once before, and it remained on the list. That this hearing tonight is not about whether or not this property should be on the program, it's whether or not we, the county, should be able to recover our costs.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, then if a, a motion is in order, I would move to retain this property on the list.
Okay, I will second that motion, and that, just to be clear, this is for 8pm, 316-21-049, 10-175 McLaren. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Sinks moved, and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor seconded.
Okay, yeah. Sure. Okay, can you conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Sinks?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
No.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries with Chow recused and Willie voting no.
And just to make it clear, I would support, and I, later on, an agenda item to, um, look into this and see if we can decide, design a fairer process, but I appreciate what Mo said, uh, what we're here to do tonight is not to redesign the process. Thank you. Um, okay, so Councilmember Chow can rejoin the meeting now, and now we will move on to the other properties, and I'll see who would wish us to speak. I have, um, five hands raised here. Um, okay, first we have Xing Lei Ju, welcome.
Hi, good day. Mayor and councilmembers, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, also, thank, uh, thanks, Mo, for the explanation. I would like to appeal for being listed on the assessment list as the address of 18850 Tuggle Avenue. Actually, before the assessment list, the only notification we received, we received is early June, and now it is stated that we need to, uh, imme, when you take action to remove the, um, weed to avoid the fire hazard because of the way it grows, and also on it indicates that I missed some, uh, complaint, complaints that land, but, uh, that was really the first notification we received, which is a phone call. We do take immediate, uh, action to try our best to address the issue of possible fire hazard. We definitely would like to, um, complain with any code set by Cupertino City and Santa Clara County, um, but since that the first notification we received is already missed the deadline, some earlier deadline, I would like to appeal for the decision, and needed I can send some pictures, uh, out tomorrow to the county clerk. And another question I have that, that is, according to my small explanation, the amount for the inspection should be 101, but in my property, I see that there is a amount of 683, this is there, I would like to know the reason. Um, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mo, can you explain, um, that issue on 18850 Tuggle, why it's $683?
Uh, $683 would, uh, comprise of two fees. One is the $101 inspection fee, but there's also another fee that makes up the difference there when a property was non-compliant at the time of the inspection, because now there's a process that we have to follow to draft a, a notice to the property owner, write a work order in case the property doesn't get brought into compliance, and then the property owner was given two weeks to bring it into compliance after that, before we would send a contractor out. We do not have a record of doing any actual abatement on the property, meaning that we believe the contract, that the property owner resolved it, and so they're only being charged for the failed inspection and for the initial inspection itself.
Okay, so the, after the initial inspection, they get a certain amount of time, and then if they fail, they get charged another, um, $582?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, but the only reason I really didn't get any, uh, earlier notifications, the, the first notification we got is already on early June, and, uh, I, we are ready to commit their action. I don't know whether that could be a reason for me to appeal for this. Honestly speaking, we definitely would like to follow any code or rules set by Cupertino City, that is for true. The only reason that we didn't do it earlier is that we, we were really not aware of the
Would you like me to respond?
Oh, certainly.
Notice was sent to every property owner in the weed abatement program at the beginning of the year. It was sent out in December informing of the, uh, January hearing that you had, had held for the commencement of the program. So, every property that is on this list received a notice in December telling them that there was a hearing in January where they had the opportunity to contest inclusion in the program. And that notice is technically the only legal notice required based on the California Health and Safety Code. We then provided them notice after the inspection of the failure, giving them an additional two weeks to bring it into compliance.
Right, but then they get charged that extra money at that point, right?
Yes, yes, but they were notified of the deadline and of the hearing date in January when the notices were sent out to every property in the program.
Right. Oh, so how come the first inspection costs 101, and then the inspection where they fail costs so much more?
There's a lot more work involved. When we look at a property, uh, if it passes the inspection, for example, if I drive up on a property and I can see a significant portion that it's done, there's nothing more that needs to be done on that property, that takes me just a, a few moments and I'm gone. If a property fails, I need to take photographs, I need to verify that I'm actually in the right location, I need to go back, when I get back to my office, and I have to draft a, a work order, do overhead images, there's a lot of other processing that takes place, a lot more time involved in that process. There's a lot of other processing that takes place, a lot more time involved in that process so that we can proceed with abatement should the property owner fail to comply.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
May I ask one last question? Thank you for the explanation, Mo, but I wonder whether there is any other way you can check this information on the Cupertino City's website or somewhere else? Because it seems that the mail system is not so reliable. I really didn't get any earlier notification here.
There's only two ways that the notice can be done. One is we could come up and nail it on a tree. That's not very effective. The other is to send it through the US mail. But as far as standards and that, we do keep that information on the county's website. We do have a, the county does have a weed abatement page where you can look at what our standards are and what needs to be done. And that would also give you a place where you can check specifics for your jurisdiction. And if the information's not there, a phone call to our office will give you, excuse me, will give you the information if, if, if we have it. And if not, we'll direct you to the appropriate person.
Okay, yeah, maybe in the future, we do need some other kind of notification. I know, you know, I get a, a letter from the post office saying, hey, sorry that your mail, our mail truck was broken into. You probably didn't get some of your mail, you know, and there's nothing we can do about it. So maybe, you know, we do need some more of a 21st century notification method in the future.
We're open to those suggestions, but we still have a legal requirement that we have to do it one of those two ways.
Okay. All right, next I've got Nagashwara Vampanthi, welcome.
Hello, sir?
Yeah, we can hear you?
Yes.
Honorable mayor and city council, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. We will gladly comply with any requirements regarding the weed abatement program. I'm, I'm the owner of the property at 11841 Upland Way. The APN number is 366, uh, 03, sorry, 05, 062. And we hire a private gardener who costs us much less. And we have cleared the weeds once. It's possible that it rained after that. And if you give me a chance, I'll do it again. That's no problem. But like one of the council members said, this is not giving us a chance to comply with the regulation because we are making every effort to comply and we want to be compliant. And what we are being charged is far higher than what my gardener charges.
Right, so Mo, can you comment why it was $1,977 on this? Did the county perform the work?
Can you give me that number again? My pen stopped working.
I'm sorry, the APN, it's 11841 Upland and it's APN 36603-062.
05, 062.
Right.
Okay, let me, let me check my.
No, no, mine shows 03-062.
All right, let me, let me check really quickly here.
What was the fine amount?
Sorry.
I don't know if you have the same list we have, but it's number 63.
I'm looking for where I have, uh, 62, okay.
53 on our list, yeah, dash 062.
Yes, we, uh, the work was performed by the county, was performed by a county contractor.
No, no, no work was performed. I have photos.
Stop, stop, stop. Let, let me finish saying what I have to say. Work was performed by a county contractor in July of 2019. But because this all has to be turned in after this public hearing, this had not been able to be built and done before the hearing last year. It had to roll to this year. So in 2020, their property was compliant. But in 2019, it was non-compliant. There was $1,000 worth of, $1,070.55 worth of cost for the actual abatement and then the administrative cost of $806. And then this year it was inspected, but passed that inspection. So there was only the 101 in 2020.
Ah, okay, all right, so this is from last year because it didn't get.
It, it's a rollover fee, yes.
Nothing was done last year either. I have photos. Nothing was done by any contractor last year.
Okay. So Mo, when a county contractor performs the work, is there any way to prove that they did the work?
I have, I have their photographs of the, of the areas that they worked. It's a matter of how do I do this to show this on the screen? I can try to do the share screen and see if I can make that come up. Can you see that?
Uh, no, not yet. So you have to share your screen and then click on, click on yours, click on that photo on your screen or just sharing it isn't enough. Then you have to click on.
I, I just.
There we go.
How's that? Okay.
Okay.
So these are the photos you see July 23 of 2019. This is one particular, this is one of the examples where you see the top photo is the before picture. The bottom photo is the after picture. Where that was, this grass is well over the six-inch limit. It is high. It does pose a fire hazard. And the bottom picture is the same area after it's been cut.
Okay.
So there, that's the evidence that the work was actually done by the county's contractor.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I, I can't see the date on the lower picture. Is it my monitor? Or can you slide the picture up? I see the upper picture, 7/23 of 19.
I'm, yeah, I'm.
Yeah, scroll down that scroll bar on the right side of your screen. Just scroll down a little bit.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that.
There you go. Okay, 7/23. Okay, so.
Same day.
Same day, six hours and three minutes difference.
So can I ask the resident, did he do the work? Or, you know, does he dispute the picture or did he do the work?
Well, we hire a gardener to do the cutting every year. And I'm not sure what the contractor did.
So on 7/23, do you, do you have any real good feel that your gardener did this work? Or somebody in a work truck did this work?
Uh, I don't have a good feel, actually. And I'm not sure what exactly they did because I, we hire a private gardener to do the same thing.
But you don't, you don't live at this property, right?
No, it's an empty lot.
Ah, okay. All right, um, yeah, thank you, Mo. You can stop sharing now.
There we go.
Okay, um, we will move on now to Banu. Welcome, Banu. And if you could, when you speak, if you can include the address of your property so we can look it up on our, our, on our list.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. Hello, everyone. My name is Bhaneep Spati at property 10530 Pineville Avenue in Cupertino. My APN number is 369-13-029. I'm here to request you to reconsider adding my home to the weed abatement program. We purchased our home in Cupertino at the mentioned address last spring. In the brief while between when the house was changing hands, the lawn in the front yard was deemed too long and our house was added to the weed abatement program. I can assure you that we take immense pride in keeping our lawn in immaculate condition. And ever since we moved to a program, into the house, we hired a professional gardener to take care of the lawn. And ever since the COVID situation has set in, I've been diligently doing it myself. I have sent pictures to Christine to share, taken from today, and that very much shows the condition of our lawn ever since we moved into our house.
Okay, thank you. So.
Thank you.
Look at this 101 dollars is assessed and why? Yeah, unfortunately, it may, it may have been inspected before you moved into the house. And then after you moved in and you took care of it, but it was already put on the list.
Right, I understand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Again, this is Mo. I'm looking at this picture. If the entire property looks like this, I would commit to not only removing it from the program, but to removing the current, to removing any fee of an inspection for 2020. If there are any additional fees from previously, that would be a different issue. But the 100, the 101 dollars from this year and removing it from the program, if the entire property looks like this, I'll have to go take a look at it to verify that. But if it all looks like that, I see no problem with doing that and dismissing the fee on this particular property. I didn't do this inspection and I don't know that my inspector looked at it with the same eye that I would.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mo. And yeah, can I assure you that you're welcome anytime? And I, I'm, I'm cognizant of the fact that maybe it was a case of the, the timing being wrong.
I think it probably, it, it probably was and many people get caught up in a timing issue between properties where the previous owner didn't do anything with it. The new owner is trying to take care of it. We just, in this case, it is clearly landscaped in a manner that would, for the most part, remove the threat. So I think that it would be, it would be sufficient to remove it if the entire property looks like this.
Thank you for consideration.
Mo, are we, are we able to take some contingent action on this tonight, given what you're saying? I'm, I don't know.
You could simply, first of all, I'm not looking at the, the list. Is this simply a $101 fee on this particular property?
Yes, it is.
Okay, dismiss, I would move that it be dismissed.
Thank you. That's, that's really clear. We know how to do that.
And then I, I will work with the property owner and decide if it is appropriate to remove it from the list for the future.
Okay, great. And the address of this property again? 10530 Pineville. Thank you.
Thank you all for consideration. So can I expect to hear from you by postal mail? Or if you can advise how the communication will be, I'd be happy to keep my eyes and ears out.
Um, you can. Paul, can you call my, can you call my office tomorrow?
I can do that. I'll do that at the number mentioned on the, on the communication. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Next we are on to Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Hi, Mayor Scharf, councilmembers and staff. I'm just here, I appreciate the purpose of the weed abatement program, but I want to implore to all of you to add this to a future agenda and fix it. Fix it so that the notifications are a little bit more robust, that the residents are really clear on what needs to be fixed and what the process is, what it takes for them to clear themselves before they, and allow them a one-shot, notified, fix the problem and not be on the list. Please, thank you. I think that would be a more educated way to go. Thank you.
Right, and I think, Mo, if we did that, the city would probably be on the hook for that first freebie inspection. Is that true?
That would be the only way we would be able to do it.
Right, okay. And maybe we'd have to raise the fees for the people that stayed on the list in order to offset that cost, but we'll put that.
Actually, actually, Mr. Mayor, you can't, you can't offset the fee to the other people because you can't transfer fees that were associated to an inspection of one property to another property.
Okay, fair enough.
That would violate the, the laws.
Okay, thank you. Next we have phone caller ending in 0976. Welcome. Are you there? Caller 0976.
Yes.
Hello?
Hello, yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Uh, I, I'm the owner of 10067, as per, Penta Avenue, Cupertino, California.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Mayor, Council and Officer Mo and Christine. The reason I call is I have an unusual situation. Last year, I, about late May, late March, I went to Taiwan to take care of my sick, sick, very severe sick father. Unfortunately, he died in July. Then I needed to do some funeral arrangement, arrangement and come back probably like, like November, somewhere in November. So, Officer Mo, I, I went to the office of the county and I showed that we already clean after I clean. But I always am not sure I missed a meeting last year. I'm sorry, I just unable to attend a meeting. So I appreciate Christine giving me the information. So I attend this year to, if, if, my personal opinion, I, I, I just, last year, I just happened a sad situation. I just cannot do the weeds, but I already clean and I hope this year I already clean. And in the future, I will design, use maybe the good ground cover and a whole plastic to keep the weeds off. So I, I hope you understand my situation. I, I hope you can shorten the three-year period and maybe, you know, do me a favor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Mo and Christine and Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Mooney. Welcome, Mooney.
Good evening, mayor and council. Could you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, I, I'm just, as a resident, I mean, I certainly appreciate, you know, the process that we have where the weed abatement program, so because I, I want to live in a city that's now neat and clean and tidy, not, you know, some, you know, place that looks like a rundown. So, so I really like the program itself. But the part that I don't understand is, you know, how this works. Because there are two homes, I'll give you right, right across my home. I'll give you the street address, 20616-20592. If there are any homes, you know, in Cupertino that needs to get on the weed abatement program, those two homes should be on that list. So they are right on the main road, you know, with a lot of traffic and I have no idea how these two homes, you know, haven't been looked at. And I live right across and, you know, I've seen those homes, you know, to be very, you know, I, I don't even know what the words to describe it, you know, like, you know, weeds are like, you know, knee level and, you know, even some, sometimes it's a base level, right? So I, I, I would like some kind of, you know, consistence, consistency, you know, where it's applied. So because I thought, you know, looking at those two homes, you know, we don't have any programs at all. And here I come, you know, listening to all of this, looks like, you know, we have a pretty stringent program. We are even refusing to let people get off the list, even after they fix it. So I don't know what's going on with these two homes, you know, why they are not, not on the list. And I did ask, you know, quite a few people, like, you know, how to report about them. And I've been told, you know, you will go to the county and, you know, do something. So I, I didn't have an interest in doing that.
All right, so Mo, how, you know, I'm sure sometimes things get missed. How, how does someone, you know, complain to the county about a home that should be on the list or a proper, or empty lot?
Well, we tried to make it really. Well, we tried to make it really easy. There's an app that's available for both Apple and Android. It's called Weed Hazard. Not only does it allow you to tell me all the information you want to tell me, but you can actually use the app to take pictures of the problem that you see and send that to us in that same complaint. I think it lets you take up the four pictures, so you can show us exactly what you're looking at. We then have to confirm that the problem actually exists before the property would go on the program. Understand that we have a program of three people trying to cover the entire county. So we unfortunately do miss some properties that should be on the program. And we do need the help of the public to make sure that we can keep this county as fire-safe as possible. I have those addresses, and I will absolutely check them out.
Yeah, so what's the name of the app?
It's Weed Hazard.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, and last but not least, we have Kitty Moore, welcome Kitty.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that we are sheltering in place for a pandemic, and that some individuals may not be able, or feel able to go out and pull their weeds, and they might need assistance. So if there are any organizations locally available who might be able to assist some of our residents, that would be great. And I don't quite understand what the metrics are for when someone ends up on this list. Years ago, it was three feet and dead weeds which needed to be abated. And now I'm hearing that it's down to six inches. And I would like to have that part explained because, you know, one of my neighbors spoke to me about this, having been put on the list, and I was concerned that the requirements have now become very restrictive. So if you could clarify that from the staff report, it would be very helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, Mo, yeah, I did hear six inches, is that for grass? Or is it different for grass and weeds, or how does that work?
Well, grass, flammable grasses and weeds interchangeable in this discussion. I will say that these rules have not changed in my time here, and I've been doing this for 15 years. They've, they've been that since I came on board. It is only during the fire season, so someone could have, code may have different rules year-round, I don't know. But during the fire season, between April 30th and the end of October, the grasses need to be maintained for the entire period at a level of six inches or less. This does not include ornamental vegetation. So if you have flowers or shrubs, they can of course be much bigger. Trees need to be trimmed six feet off the ground. You need driveway clearances according to the, the defensible space program, depending on where you're at. But those standards are listed on our website and in the information that we provide to the property owners that have been added to the program. Including at the time that we add them, we send them a brochure which gives them the information saying, here are the standards and what needs to be done.
Hey, Mo, just for everybody's convenience on the call, do you want to say what your website address is?
It's, if you search on Weed Abatement on Google, it'll take you right there. I, I don't know the, I don't know the URL off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Let me go back and see if anyone, no, no more hands raised, so we can bring this back to council for a motion. The only property, yeah, Mo mentioned is ten five three zero Pineville, that apparently we should remove from this list. We go back to my agenda.
So do we wait to ask our questions?
No, go ahead, you can start.
So the question, first question I've got to, Mo, realizing you only have a crew of three and stuff, on a 12-month basis, for all of Cupertino, how many houses or property, how many properties do you typically cite on a yearly basis? Is it 20? I mean, we see just a few that come here, meaning the, well, I'm not sure, but how many do you cite on a yearly basis? Do you, you know, rough?
It, it has changed over the years, but we look at a couple of hundred properties in Cupertino.
And so you cite on a yearly basis, you actually put on the list, or, you know, yeah, put them on the list, 50 or 100, or 150?
Are you saying how many do we add in a year?
Yeah.
I would have to get back to you on that, I don't, I don't have that statistic. We might add 20.
20 per year?
Was that 10% roughly, Mo?
Yes.
Of the properties you look at, you look at near, that's roughly 10%?
Yes, but at the same time, you have others coming off the list because of three years of compliance. So it doesn't go up by 10%. It usually stays pretty flat.
Okay, and do we have a picture of one zero zero six seven Tanta? The Tanta gentleman who?
What, can, do you have the APN number on that one?
What, what I heard him say was one zero zero six seven Tanta, but his,
Tanta.
Okay, Tanta.
Yeah, can you look, I closed that screen. John, can you do that, find the APN for him? It's on the list, but I don't have that open right now.
Let me, I, I think, hang on, let me see if I can find the list here.
I have my lap full of paper. So while he's looking at that, you know, I'm gonna somewhat say again what I said before, and that is, you know, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to residents that, you know, if we're talking about, you know, our true residential areas with concrete sidewalks, very little area for vegetation, that if they're, if they're willing to, to take their time, because most of these are not high dollars, but the principle matters to them, they're, they're coming down here and talking with us. And the large majority of them are very believable. And for those, I'm sympathetic, I'm not here to punish people. If, if there's an egregious situation, you know, by all means, you know, it happened over and over again, or possibly in the case of the Pineville, where the owner doesn't live there, that there are some extenuating circumstances. Now, that is a rural area, nobody's living there, and we saw the pictures of extra growth. When we get to the motion part, you know, I'll, I'll have a suggestion there. But I, I do want to say that, you know, I, I really want to, to work with our community. And, you know, it's in their interest, it's in our interest, the community's interest. Yes, fire hazard is an important topic, and that's Mo's job. And there are areas of Cupertino in the foothills that absolutely have to be looked after. So if you are able to come up with that one, I'd really be interested to see the house, one zero zero six seven, you know.
Well, I, I can tell you that in, in 2020, the property did pass the comply, it complied.
Oh, good to hear, yeah.
Last year, it was, last year, it was added to the program for non-compliance, according to the property owner, while they were away for a, a personal emergency, which of course, we had no, no knowledge of.
Yeah, so I, I've pretty much said what, you know, I feel I need to say for the community, and so next, you know, go to the next councilman.
Okay, anyone else, would anyone else like to speak on this issue?
Yes, I have a question. So, there are, we have other code enforcement, code violation, right? This kind of issue never comes to the council agenda. And this program, it's on the council agenda, rather than just a mail to the resident just to collect the fines? What's our role here, I'm confused? If we don't have any role, why are we here? If we don't have any decision power on any of this property, why are we here?
Well, you have oversight over the program to ensure that we are fulfilling our responsibilities correctly. If you feel that we have violated our job or oath in any way, or we've done something incorrectly, or we did it wrong, or improperly, you can overrule us on being able to collect a fee, or take a property from the program in, in the commencement hearing that we did back in January. Your role is oversight in your community over our running of the program. Your code enforcement department, which is a wonderful department, quite often passes these, these properties on to us because we not only go out and can address them, but we can actually correct when the property owner has failed to do so without all of the legal wranglings that are required for a code enforcement division to, to handle. So there's different processes. Our process, under the Health and Safety Code, does require that the jurisdictional responsibility is with you, and you have to decide whether or not we can move forward with the properties in the beginning of the year, and whether or not we can collect the fees at the end of the year.
So the decision power is on the council? It's, we are not supposed to just rubber stamp because of it's already on the list? We are supposed to listen to the residents and to see if there is any?
This is an evidentiary hearing, you're supposed to hear the evidence and, and see if, if we followed the rules. My, my argument is if we followed the rules and did everything exactly the way that it's described, the way that we, we worked in good faith, did everything according to the rules, then we should be permitted to collect the fees. If you find that we didn't do that, then you absolutely should rule against us. If a property owner shows that we did something that was not necessary, then you should rule against us. There's, there are reasons you should rule against us, but the evidence should support that decision, not simply because somebody is upset.
Okay, so in case we rule against a decision, the city will have to pay the?
No.
No?
If I'm, if I did some, if you're ruling against me based on evidence, then I was wrong and don't get to collect that fee, that's it.
Oh, okay. If it's something that procedurally wrong. But in this case, a resident is away, so in case, I think like last time, if the council feel we are sympathetic to a resident because they, they have, they kept a certain, they're, on their front yard, they have some plants that they really treasures, that we think it's weed, but they think it's their treasure. So, or in this case, that this person went out of the country to take care of families. So do we have the, can, can we be sympathetic to this situation? But then it's not really your, you are doing everything right, I understand that.
I will say this, you have the power to make the decisions as, as a council. But what I will say is, when someone goes away to take care of an emergency, and they have a property, and it's unmaintained, that that property risks everyone else around it. They still have a responsibility to take care of it, or to have it taken care of for them, even though they can't be here. That's the position that we hold, that's what I would be doing on my property, that's what I would expect others to do on their properties.
Okay.
But that's just my opinion.
No, I appreciate that, and you're absolutely right. You know, we do want to be sympathetic to extenuating circumstances, but you're right. It is, you know, we, we do go on vacation, it's our responsibility to, to take care of those things. So I appreciate that, that statement. Okay, anybody else wish to speak on this, Rod or, or Darcy? I don't have anything.
I would, I would just make one quick comment, you know. I, you know, I, I do respect Mo and, and, you know, what he's doing for us. I would take a little bit of an issue that, you know, he describes it that whether or not we find that he did something physically wrong, then we rule against him. I, I take issue with that being the only thing that we're here for. You know, we're to look at the evidence, and I, I suggest that when Weed Abatement wants to come and ask us to rule against somebody, I, you know, as long as I'm up here, I'm gonna want to see the before and after picture, just like we saw at Pineville. If I'm going to rule against a resident, I want to see the evidence, like we saw with Pineville, the before, the after. Without that, I don't feel I can make a, a real, I can't really discern whether or not that person is guilty. Doesn't have anything to do with Mo did or didn't do something wrong, it's whether or not the resident did or did not do something wrong. And so I just want to make that, you know, a clarification that in the future, just bring the pictures, you know, like you did with Pineville, and then, you know, I've got what I need. Innocent until proven guilty, I, I have to see the, the evidence.
Can I make a response to that? With the properties that we're saying failed the inspection, and that we're saying we did work on those properties, if we don't have the evidence, then I absolutely think you should rule against us. That we do bring those photographs. When we're saying that I abated this property, I showed you the pictures of Upland. I had the pictures to, to support that argument. If I didn't, I would agree, you should vote it, you should rule against it. That, that's exactly what this is for. I have to prove my case. And if I don't, then yes, rule against me. There's no hard feelings on my part, that's my job. If I didn't do it, then you should.
Now, I, I didn't see pictures for one eight eight five zero Tugel. Did I miss something, or?
What was the, anything that had a hundred dollars, the one hundred and one dollar fee, was, there's no pictures because that's the inspection fee for every property we looked at.
Yeah, Tugel is $683.
Okay. All right, I can, I can go out to that record and find those pictures.
We, we previously talked about this property, though, I'd like to bring a motion.
Great, go.
I would move that we, this is the hearing, considering objections from any property owners listed on the assessment report, and adopt Resolution Number 20-101 approving the lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels for the annual weed and brush abatement programs to allow the county to, to recover the cost of abatement. And I have a brief comment, if somebody would care a second.
Yeah, the only amendment is to remove that one property that Mo mentioned.
One zero five three zero Pineville.
Correct.
Which Mo certified to be.
Okay, sure, I'd be happy to second that.
So, so my comment here is, unless we have evidence to suggest that the county has misstepped, in effect, what we're basically saying is Cupertino taxpayers. in effect, what we're basically saying is Cupertino taxpayers are on the hook to pay fees. And so I, I don't think that's fair and I don't think it's right. I think we, we have to be fair to everybody and all we're doing here is cost recovery. You may not like it. The process could be improved, there's no doubt. But I do think, as I've said for nine years on this council, that we have to be fair for every, to everybody. And I think it's appropriate that we get cost recovery through the, the parcels that have issues. That's all. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Rod.
Clarification, I think Mo just said that if we remove a property, the city is not on the hook for the fine, right, for the payment.
I think his point was that they go and get the fines elsewhere. Either they've got some sort of reserve fund or some...
They'll cover, they'll cover the cost.
Which is just tax money. It's more tax money.
Well, can I, I believe...
Thank you.
I want to clarify that.
I believe the issue is in the past, the city has chosen to pay the duly incurred costs on behalf of a resident and this, let me know if this is ringing a bell for, for you all. And that instead, because there wasn't evidence to find, to find the assessments were not properly incurred, but the city nonetheless wanted to basically waive the collection and agreed to pay it on behalf of the resident. And so there is that option that the city could do again.
Wait, so I think one thing is if we find with evidence that the inspection might not be, or something with, is not proper with the process and Mo sometimes would take it back or... So if we find there is something improper in the process and I think Mo said that his office will cover the cost, right? Because it's there and, and, but you are saying that...
Yes, I believe he just confirmed that, right?
Yeah, he did say that.
In the past, when the city maybe decide to waive the fee on a property, the most office can cover it, but somehow city offered to pay, pay?
I believe this happened in the past and it was before my time. I kind of came in at the end, so somebody who was more involved in that might want to.
I was, I was here for that one. It had to do with the fact that this ran late into the night and the city council had chosen to dismiss because the people had waited late into the night. And my office, my director spoke with the city manager and that was worked out between them that that was, was how it was handled because it wasn't, it, it wasn't an evidentiary issue. It was simply a matter of convenience.
Okay.
We made them wait, so we dismissed their charges. That is the only one that I'm aware, well, there were three in that case, but those are the only ones that I'm aware of.
So the city wants to be kinder and we don't want to penalize your office. So we pick up the charge, pick up the charges for that.
Correct.
Right? Okay, but otherwise if it were fined, found in, because of process issues, then your office covers the charge, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
So one last comment before we vote, just so everybody understands. So I haven't seen pictures on 1-8850 Tugel. I haven't seen pictures on 1-0067 Tantau. I can't find those, um, those residents without...
Yeah, councilman, Tantau passed the inspection, so there would be no pictures.
Exactly.
Tantau, that's, that's a different, they, they were inspected. They passed, so there's no picture. As far as Tugel goes, if you would like me to share my screen, I can now show you that picture. I did find the picture of what the property looked like at the time of the inspection. Would you like me to do that, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, sure, if this will move it along, go.
Come on. These are the pictures. And I think this one, so on, on May 26th, there's two pictures there that show that this property was overgrown at the time of the inspection.
And you don't have a picture for Tugel that's equivalent...
This is, no, we didn't cut it. This is just what it looked like at the inspection. It failed the inspection, which is why it's being paid, why it's being charged the rate it is.
Yeah, but Tugel versus Tantau.
Tantau passed.
But when you...
This failed, Tantau didn't.
So when you found Tantau failed, you don't have a picture?
Tantau didn't fail.
They didn't fail.
On the first time where you...
That was a year ago. That was last year.
Yeah, you don't have that picture?
That's, that's on a different set. I can, I, I can go and, and try to find that.
I don't think that's necessary.
I have this year's, I have this year's information up right now.
You know, I don't think the city council wants to look at every single picture of every single house on the list. You know, we have got to trust Mo's department there.
Mayor, you can speak for yourself. Mayor, you can speak for yourself.
I will speak for myself. I will trust Mo's department. And if a resident objects, um, not to the 101, that's, you know, nothing we can do about. But if they object to being found not in compliance, then we need to look at the pictures. But there's a hundred some, I don't have to go back, but we are obviously not going to look at every picture for every property and try to second guess Mo, whose department does this for a living.
So there was a first and a, or a motion and a second and then...
Right, so can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Chow?
You're, you're on mute, Leon.
Councilmember Chow, can you unmute, please?
Okay. Can we ask Mo to maybe email the picture that John asked for?
Right, but now, now we're taking a vote.
Can, okay. I think he is still concerned about our residents. Let's, um, have that emailed. But I trust that Mo must have handled it properly. But I think John just wants that, wants that peace of mind. So, yeah, aye.
Councilmember Six?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
No.
Councilmember Paul, I mean Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
The mission carries with Willie voting no.
Okay. All right, let me go back to my...
So Mo, could you please email Councilmember John Willie the picture?
Yes.
And me too. Okay, so I'll take a look.
Um, well, maybe you need to email every single picture of every house.
Okay, the next item is, um...
Right.
Prop 15.
Okay, Prop 15. This is a resolution supporting the statewide measure Prop 15, which increases funding for public schools, community colleges, and local government services by changing tax assessment of commercial and industrial property through an initiative constitutional amendment on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. Great, is there a staff report on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Casey Elliott with Townsend Public Affairs.
Hey, Casey, you have some audio. I think you have some audio issues.
One second.
Yeah, you could turn off your video if it's on and that might clear up your audio. We don't need to see it.
Okay, just a second.
Keep talking.
Okay. Uh, this is Casey Elliott with Townsend Public Affairs, providing a staff report on the item related to Proposition 15 on the November ballot. If it's all right, I'd like to start by providing just a little bit of background information as it relates to, to property taxes. As you know, local governments, cities, counties, school districts levy property taxes based on the value of the property. Those taxes include real property, land and buildings, as well as business property, machinery, computers, office equipment, those types of things. Property taxes raise about $65 billion annually statewide for local governments. About $2 billion of that is attributable to personal, to business personal property. Statewide, about 60% of that property tax raise is allocated to cities, special districts, while the remaining 40% is allocated to, to schools and community colleges. Each property tax, each property owner's annual property tax bill is equal to the taxable value of their property multiplied by their property tax rate. The rates are capped at 1% under Proposition 13, plus smaller voter-approved rates to finance local infrastructure, education bonds, various, various special district items. And then a property's taxable value is generally based on the purchase price of, of the property. So when a property is purchased, the accounting assessor will assign a value to that property, which is often the purchase price. Each year thereafter, the property's taxable value increases by 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. That process continues until the property is sold again and taxed at its purchase price or if there's another event that would trigger accounting reassessment, such as significant remodel or, or other type of work that would cause the reassessment. In most years historically, the market value of property has grown faster than, than 2% a year. And as a result, um, the taxable value of most properties over time is less than their market value. That's all kind of just to set the stage on, on Proposition 15. So what Proposition 15 does is it would require commercial and industrial properties as well as vacant land, which is not intended for housing, commercial agriculture, or protected open space, to be taxed on its fair market value as opposed to its purchase price. And so in other words, what, what the property could be sold for on the market. This shift to market value assessment would phase under Proposition 15, if it were to pass, would be phased in beginning in 2022. The proposition would further require commercial and industrial properties to have their fair market value reassessed every three years. For properties that, where the majority of the space is occupied by small businesses, which is defined as, as businesses having 50 or fewer employees, the shift to the market value taxation would not begin until 2025 or a date, or a later date if it's set by the legislature. The legislature has some flexibility on, on that date. Properties owned by individuals or businesses whose properties holdings are less than $3 million are exempt from the market valuation taxation. These properties would continue to be taxed based on purchase price. Similarly, residential properties would continue to be taxed based on purchase price as, as is currently done. With residential and, and these smaller businesses being maintained, this is why you often hear that things, hear this referred to as split role. So businesses will be treated one way, individuals will be treated another. As far as the revenues related, Proposition 15 allocates most of the revenue to cities, counties, special districts, and school districts. The measure provides for the states as well as counties to recoup costs associated with the implementation of this, of this proposition. But after those expenses are subtracted from the new rep generated, roughly 60% of the funds would be allocated to cities, counties, and special districts, with each of those entities receiving an amount that proportioned to their share of property tax under current law. The remaining 40% would be allocated to school districts and community college districts, according to the same people formula as the state uses to distribute most of their funding for these entities. The, I should note for the schools, the allocation would supplement existing school funds and community college funds and not supplement existing state funding. Uh, as far as specific dollars, the legislative annual part finance in analyzing this measure anticipate a, a net increase in annual property tax in the range of $7.5 to $12 billion in most years. Obviously, with property taxes being tied to fair market value, there would be some fluctuations depending upon trends within the, the broader real estate market. After backfilling the, like I said, the state income tax loss that would be associated as well as county administrative costs, there's an estimated $6.5 to $11.5 billion that would then go out to be reallocated to schools and local governments under the 60-40 split. Um, and then lastly, I think the, I'd like to point out that under a, um, a report that was made available by Blue Sky Consulting Group earlier this year, the estimates would be that the city of Cupertino could expect somewhere around $4.9 million in the first year of, of implementation, which again would be the '22, '23 tax year. So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions that, that the council may have?
Okay, thank you. I had one question. The League of Cities failed to take a position on this. Is, do you have any insight as to why that is?
I would, I would assume that with the League, they're probably going to have cities on both sides of this issue. And generally, the League chooses not to... Oftentimes, the League will not get into, in, assume positions on measures where they have cities on, on different sides. Obviously, of the supporters, the proponents of this measure talk about the increased revenue that would be made available to local governments through this. On the other side, you do have some cities that are concerned about the potential impact of business and those dollars being passed along to whether it be consumers or, or renters or, or other items. So my assumption was not part of the conversations would be due to a concern about having members on both sides of the issue.
Okay, but renters, this is not for residential property, even if it's a, are you talking about renters of commercial property then?
Correct, yes, I'm sorry, I should have specified.
All right, thank you. Um, let's bring it back. Who else? Leon, would you wish to speak before we go to the comments from residents?
I have, I have a question.
Okay, go, Rod.
Yeah, um, so Prop 13 was passed in California in 1978. And, um, do, do most states that levy a property tax in some way, are they reassessing to market periodically? I mean, I've heard it said the, the assessor objects to the idea that this would just be too much work. But I was under the impression that many states have a property tax system where they are reassessing to market. Do you have any knowledge of this?
You know, a, a couple of the states that I'm, that I'm more familiar with, a, a lot of them, they will set caps on the amount of annual increase, but not the tax rate itself. So for example, in Massachusetts, they have a proposition which limits the total property tax to, to 2.5% and annual increases again to 2.5% capped regardless of, of where it's coming from. Similarly, in, in Arizona, they have Proposition 117, which was implemented, I think it went into effect in 2015. And it also limits the increase to no more than 5% a year. But then again, it doesn't also, it does not touch the actual tax rates. So in many of the other instances, you don't necessarily have the compounding of tax rates and growth in, it's one or the other. In, in, in the ones I'm familiar with, I don't want to necessarily say that's completely comprehensive, but in, in those that I'm more familiar with, it's, it's just a tax rate or increase that applies regardless of, of entity type.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um...
I, sorry, I do have some questions.
All right, go.
So I think initially I thought putting, putting this on the council agenda is good that because I would like to know what would be the impact, impact on Cupertino property tax revenue. And I hope to get an analysis on how we evaluate that. Do we have that? But then... But then I, I really am not comfortable for the city to take a position when we have only heard what it is, but we didn't have time to really study the pros and cons when we couldn't really hear from both sides.
Councilmember Chow, this is for our discussion, right now is just questions before we go to public comment.
We have the estimate for the city, the potential, I think there was a figure in the staff report.
Right, you gave it already.
Or how was that derived?
I, I was not in, involved in the, in the development of the, of the report, but based on the consultant report that's, I believe provided as part of your staff report, it indicates that the city would receive approximately 4.9 million. Again, that's going to fluctuate year to year based on, on broader economic trends within the real estate market. But in the, within the consultant report that, that's provided to council, that's the figure that they have there. I would just note that entirely, it's broken down by special district and city within Santa Clara County. And countywide, the amount is just over 500 million dollars. And that does not include 40% portion, which would go to the school districts within the county.
Yeah, I cannot get to that page right now. So, and was there a consultant report? Because I don't remember seeing that earlier. So what's our total property tax revenue for the city?
The, the new, the estimate of new money that would come?
Current property tax revenue. Because I would like to compare, right? What's the percentage compared with what we are receiving now? Otherwise, 4.7 million doesn't mean anything if I don't have a base to compare.
Councilmember Chow, I think it's approximately our, our tax, our revenue, I'm probably going to get it wrong, our revenue from property taxes is about 25, 25 million dollars a year. 4.7 is whatever percent, 4.7.
Is the consultant report in the agenda? Don't remember seeing that.
It was. Kirsten?
It was inadvertently omitted from, it's listed on the staff report, but it was submitted as a desk item tonight. It's available in, in insight with the meeting detail, along with the meeting details and in the city archives. And it was emailed to council this afternoon.
Okay, yeah, let's go, move along. I'll, I'll try and find it.
Okay, great. Let's see, who has not called yet? John?
Yes, just one quick question, trying to understand the numbers that I think I heard from. So 60-40 split from the city to the school district, and so I got a little confused. The 60% that goes to the city is the 4.7 million? And then there would be roughly 3. something million for the schools? Or is the 4.7 million being split 60-40?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, sorry for the confusion. The, the, since the property taxes collected at the county level, it's a 60-40 split at the, at the county level, so the 60% which would go to cities and special districts in a county would be based on the current property tax location in Santa Clara County. So the city's portion of that 60% would be the 4.9 million.
Okay, so the school would get about 3.3 million, or 3.4 million, something like that. Now, the next question, which maybe you can't answer. So you had said that it's going to the schools, including junior colleges. And so then I get a little bit lost, you know, we've got the CUSD elementary school, then we've got the high school district, and then we've got the Deans College in our sphere. So now that 3.3 million is going to get split up amongst those three? Do you have any idea how that, I mean, the junior college just got their measured G and H? I mean, our, our elementary school, elementary and middle schools are the ones that are really starving right now. Can you clarify what roughly would be going to them?
Sure. And, and I should note, as, as I mentioned, the consultant report doesn't have the exact numbers, so I'll kind of be spitballing a, a little bit here. But the 40% that would be collected, again, at the county level and for occasion, that would get further split, and it's more or less along the Prop 98 split. So amongst that 40%, community colleges will get 11% of that funding. And that's similar to the Proposition 98 split is an 89, 11%. So 11% will go to the community colleges within the county. So then the remaining 89% of the 40% will get distributed to K through 12 districts based on current education formulas. So I believe the numbers that I saw floating around, and I, and I don't want to quote them, I, I, I just, I, just to give you round numbers, I, I think I saw something, 9 million for Cupertino unified, and around maybe a million and a half for Fremont UST, just by way. Again, I would kind of take those with a grain of salt, I don't, I don't want to, but give you at least maybe a, a little bit of idea of where that's coming from.
Yeah, I greatly appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, Darcy, do you have anything?
No, it's your public comment.
Okay.
I might just, just to help Liang and John, I believe some members of the public do have some, some estimates. And the, the report that shows what would come to the city of Cupertino in the first year was sent by, under Lauren's name, at 5:16 PM. So it's, it's the C allocation of resources there, and there it shows Cupertino at 4.9 million annually. So if that helps at all, I, I'm also in favor of going to the public to hear what they expressed.
Thank you.
Just a minute, I shared the screen, can you see that? This is something Christina sent me. This is a really nice figure of how our property tax is allocated to different parts. Can you see that?
Yeah.
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 Okay. So I've got about nine hand raised. First, Neil McClintock, welcome. Neil, are you there? You have three minutes.
Oh, sorry, I'd like to speak in, speak in strong support of Prop 15 as a Cupertino resident, and as a renter as well. I think it's, before I was in full, strong support, but now it's more important than ever. As you all know, our cities are dying, we are revenue starved, the county is struggling, the state is struggling. If we do not support this measure, and honestly, we are dooming ourselves, it would be irresponsible to not support this measure, given the crisis that we're in. Our schools and our communities are desperately in need of funds, and this is one of the only practical ways we can do that right now. So I really implore you to support this. We desperately need this funding, and it will only be levied on the largest commercial properties. So to me, it's a no brainer. Originally, there was a different version that was put on the ballot, but there have been some changes made since. It's only the largest commercial property owners, there's no effect on, on homeowners, there's no effect on small businesses, and we need this money. So I'll stop right there, it's 12 billion dollars, and during coronavirus, that really is life or death at this point. And I really don't want our city to be on the side of death. And that might sound extreme, but it really is the time that we're in. And city staff know this, everyone who works in government knows this, we need money and we need it now. So, so please vote in support of Prop 15.
Okay, thank you. Next is Kathy Tran, welcome. Kathy, welcome.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council. I'm speaking on behalf of IFPTE Local 21, and on behalf of CEA and Local 21, I'm urging you to just, to support Prop 15, because they'll bring millions of dollars into Santa Clara County for community and neighborhood services that we rely on. We really have to fund things like public health, affordable housing, and education. And to do so, we can't afford corporate tax loopholes any longer. We really urge you to support Prop 15 because it's critical to our children's future. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you for being brief. Next, we have Dilza Gonzalez, welcome.
Hi, good evening, my name is Dilza Gonzalez. I am a program coordinator, Assamos Mayfair, in San Jose. First of all, I want to thank the council for considering Prop 15, which is schools and communities first. This proposition will generate billions of dollars in funding for our schools and public services. This money can be invested in communities that have been historically underfunded. And I agree with the gentleman before us, we're in critical time where this money is necessary for our communities. We are talking about 12 billion dollars that are going to be able to be invested in neighborhoods that are already being impacted, impacted in their schools libraries, in schools, in community service, in hospitals, and especially in those families that can't afford being living here right now. Let's remember, we're going through a pandemic pretty soon, we're going to go into recession, and now more than ever, we need to support propositions like this that are here to help our communities, and especially our kids and their, and their future. This is why I urge you to support the staff recommendation to draft a resolution in support of Proposition 15. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Bob Brownstein, welcome Bob.
Thank you, and good evening. I work for a nonprofit in Santa Clara County that supports Proposition 15, and I support it myself, primarily because it generates very badly needed revenue for both local governments and schools. Most of the revenue that will be generated will come from a relatively small number of firms that have unfairly benefited from the existing system. They haven't been reassessed in decades, unlike the experience of many homeowners, and so they pay very, very low taxes. There's an element of unfairness within the business community because of this. A brand new young company that buys a property has to pay very high property taxes. These firms that have simply been in place for a long time, they could be competing with the young company, they'll be paying much, much lower taxes. In addition, there will be a significant benefit to the California economy by the adoption of Proposition 15. The fact is, school and local governments spend virtually all the revenue that they get in California. And even the research done by the opponents of Proposition 15, note that the result of the measure will be the addition of thousands of additional jobs in the state because of the spending effect of local governments and the multiplier that happens when local governments spend money with local firms. One last point that I want to emphasize is that the prohibition against changes in the property tax system for residential property will continue completely, as is the current case. Residential property will not be impacted by Proposition 15, other than there will be an indirect benefit to residential property. Because when the property tax base goes up, when the assessed valuation in the county goes up, then where general obligation bonds exist, the cost of those bonds is spread out over a bigger base. And when that happens, either residential property pays less each year, or it pays for a smaller number of years because the bonds get paid off. So for all of those reasons, it's beneficial to support Proposition 15. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Bob. Next, we have Jessica Vollmer, welcome.
Oh, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Great, I'm the organizing director for Working Partnerships USA. We're one of many organizations locally that support this proposition. And I'd like to thank you all for considering this resolution in support of schools and communities first. And also to share that just hours ago, the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors also directed staff to draft a resolution in support of this measure. This initiative will generate billions of dollars statewide for our schools and public services. Not only have our schools and communities been underfunded for over four decades, as corporations have been skirt, or have skirted paying their fair share towards those resources, but we're now climbing out of a public health crisis that has decimated public budgets. Proposition 15 will generate, as stated, over 4.9 million dollars annually to the city of Cupertino's general fund when passed, to the money that can be used for all the essential public services our residents and frankly, our businesses rely on to, to live and thrive here. It's also projected that based on the 2018 to 2019 second principal average daily attendance and local control funding formula proportions, that this initiative will generate 9.3 million dollars annually for Cupertino Union School District, and over a million dollars for Fremont Union School District. These revenues are generated by reassessing at fair market value all commercial and industrial properties valued at over 3 million dollars. So all properties valued at 3 million dollars or less are excluded from reassessment, as are all residential and agricultural properties, which means about 88% of our state's businesses are excluded from reassessment. Additionally, it will level the playing field for businesses by requiring that all corporate commercial properties pay their taxes based on fair market value, regardless of when that property was purchased, which eliminates, as I believe stated before, a huge competitive disadvantage for our new businesses. And it's also, it will also provide the largest tax break for businesses in decades by eliminating the business, or by providing a tax break of up to 500,000 dollars of the business personal property tax, which benefits 90% of our state's businesses. So we have an opportunity in November to put our students and communities before a small percentage of businesses that have been taking advantage of Prop 13 protections, to avoid paying billions in resources towards the services that they also rely on to thrive. It's also a, a critical step in the recovery of our local jurisdictions from this public health crisis. We're really excited that y'all are considering taking this step with us to support Proposition 15, and I urge you all to vote in support of the staff's recommendation to support this measure. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Kim.
Can I ask, excuse me, could I ask a question or two of that speaker?
Sure.
Thank you, Jessica, I appreciate your, your helping educate us. Can you repeat those numbers for our, the school districts nearest and dearest to our hearts here in Cupertino?
Yes, so these are hot off the presses, but we, this Cupertino Union School District would see about 9.3 million dollars annually in increased revenues to their school budgets. And Fremont Union School District would see over 1 million dollars annually to their school district general funds. And I think it's also important just to state, or just to say that another component of this initiative is transparency. So the, the school funding is distributed based on local control, the local control funding formulas, so there's direct participation in, in that funding, or in, in how districts are funded, and it's based on equity. And then the, any, any institution or agency that receives any of this revenue will issue a public audit annually to show where this money has gone, so that, you know, we're all able to, to make sure it's being spent directly within our communities.
Okay, and then the study that, that shows the amount that would come to Cupertino, my understanding was done by, I think it was Blue Sky Group? And, and my understanding is, Blue Sky Consulting Group, they're an independent economics shop out of Emeryville, California, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
The, the study we got was from May 4th, 2020. Have there been any updates since, or does, to the best of your knowledge, is, is that an accurate figure for Cupertino, the 4.9 million dollars?
That is, that is the most up to date figure that we have right now.
Okay, and, and how would it expect to change over time as properties are reassessed? And, and how would it expect to change over time as properties are reassessed?
Well, you know, the assumption is that that, you know, as property values increase, and as they're reassessed to fair market value, that the property tax, like the, the amounts on which these properties pay their, their property tax will also increase. So if we're looking at $4.9 million in the first year, assuming that our property values continue to increase, that number would also continue to increase.
Okay. And so for, for any of the properties in our city that are commercial, whether they're, they have housing on them, or whether they have other businesses on them, they would, they would be subject to this to the extent that they exceeded $3 million, and also subject to the phase in that the legislature can control if economic circumstances warrant. Is that correct?
So they'll be subject to reassessment if they are a property that's worth more than $3 million. And also if, so if 75% or more of that commercial property is used actually for residential purposes, so for mixed-use properties, those properties are also excluded from reassessment.
Oh, okay. All right. Very good. But, but an office complex, for example, would not have any such exemption?
If they are used for strictly commercial properties and the property value is more than $3 million, then they would be reassessed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. Hey, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I have a question for you as well. So the, the percentages, is that the value percentage or the area square feet percentage or, or what?
The percentage for, when you say percentage, you mean like the 75%?
Right, exactly, yes.
That's a great question. I would actually suggest, if possible, to direct that to Bob Brownstein, who I believe is also still on the call.
Okay. Yeah, Bob, are you there? Let me allow him to talk. Okay, Bob?
Yeah, it's, the 75% is square footage.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to know. And so also, the 3 million, so that's a fixed number. Does that change over the years with inflation, or is it always fixed at 3 million forever? Or how does that work?
I can answer that. It, it changes based on inflation, and inflation will be for each county in California, because there are some counties that have very rapid real estate prices going up and some are much lower.
Right, okay. And down now, for better or for worse. Okay. Let me go back to public comment.
One question for this speaker, and that is, the money that would go to CUSD, I'm thinking that it's irregardless of the LCFF versus the basic aid, meaning other cities that are right around us, you know, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, their schools are basic aid, so they are actually getting more money per student than we are, but they would be also benefiting to the exact same degree that CUSD would be benefiting? No difference? LCFF versus basic aid, it's just a net increase of school money? Can you just kind of let me know if my thinking's correct?
Can I answer that?
Oh, please, yes. Because it seemed like it was not correct from the figures that were thrown out.
So the, the way it will work is if a school district is getting more than the amount that is the form, the formula amount from the state of California, you know, the, the way it currently works now, if you, the state assumes a certain amount that the school district gets, if the property taxes are lower than that, the state makes up the difference. If the property taxes are above that, the state doesn't give anything to the district, they keep the property taxes. In, in the case of a district where the property taxes are higher than that amount, extra money from schools and communities first would be limited to $100 per ADU. If it's districts that are below the current amount that the state has calculated for school districts, then additional money will go to those districts to get them up to the total that the state formula provides for.
An ADU doesn't mean what we know as a housing.
Right, I know, that's confusing.
Average, average daily attendance.
Thank you. Could I ask, could I ask just one more question?
Yeah.
So my belief is, and I had heard this from, from Polly Bovee, the superintendent of the Fremont Union High School District, that back in the day when Prop 13 passed, a lot of taxpayers didn't really understand that commercial properties were going to enjoy the same exemption as homeowners. And at that time, schools here were funded about 2/3 by commercial properties and about 1/3 residential. And in the subsequent decades, that sort of flipped on its head. So single property, single owners of residences ended up, end up paying about 2/3 of the bill and commercial property owners about 1/3. Do you have some, can you, can you tell us how it is that commercial properties, through whatever tricks or gimmicks, haven't, or maybe it's just lack of turnover, haven't been fulfilling the same percentage of, of their share of property tax as was the case before Prop 13?
Yes, I can answer that. With residential property, it's, it's relatively straightforward. A house changes hands, residential property sold relatively often, and you immediately reassess the property. But imagine if you're talking about Cisco Systems. Cisco Systems is a very large publicly traded company, I happen to hold shares in it myself, but nobody owns Cisco Systems. And so Cisco Systems will never be reassessed because the property will never change hands. You know, thousands of shares will change, but no, no single entity is going to buy, or extremely unlikely, some single entity is going to buy Cisco Systems. Plus, the California law allows many kinds of business transactions, sales to take place that are sales but do not trigger reassessments. And as, as a result of that, there are particularly some very, very large land holdings and businesses that haven't been reassessed for a very long time. And it's the existence of those entities that really constitute the problem that has shifted the share of paying the property tax bill in Santa Clara County and in other counties away from commercial industrial property and towards residential property. So Councilmember Sinks is correct, the share that of the total property tax bill that residential property is paying has gone up dramatically since Proposition 13 passed.
So these might include things of, if I understand correctly, like Exxon, Disney, even Lehigh in our own backyard.
That, that's correct. I mean, if you want to think about who will be paying the higher taxes, think of a property that has a lot of land, it's a big outfit, and it hasn't changed hands in 20, 30 years.
Thank you. Really appreciate your, your time and joining us this evening, both you and Jessica. Thanks so much.
Okay. And I, I forget who said it, but I think voters, even if they thought that commercial property was treated the same, they didn't realize how much better it gets treated because you can transfer ownership without actually getting a reassessment, which is not possible. Well, it is possible somewhat with residential, with inheritance, but, but only that.
Can I also ask some question of these two speakers?
Okay, please be quick. It's very late and we have a lot of public speakers.
For LCFF district, can you clarify again that they will get dollars beyond the base funding from the state?
Yes, the, the measure guarantees $100 per average daily attendance.
That's for basic aid?
That's for basic aid, right.
LCFF district, how, how would they calculate? How did you get the $9 million?
That, that's, that's calculated by the property taxes that is generated and then the formula that the state uses to distribute revenue back to the school district.
But if we use the formula used by the state under LCFF, you still, you wouldn't get anything extra because CUSD funding right now is a, there is a big gap from the property tax they receive right now to the amount of that, that the state, state, the base funding plus the supplemental funding. I think it's way more than $9 million, so it won't add, give CUSD or even one extra penny, from my understanding of the allocation formula. So how did you get the $9 million?
Well, I'm not sure I understood your question. What, what did you mean when you said the gap?
So CUSD is LCFF district, which means the property tax they get is not enough to even make up to the base funding that state allocate to each state, each district. LCFF allocate funding to each district based on base funding, and then when you have a high-need student, they give you a certain percentage based on, I think we have about 19% high-need students. So they, we get about $8,000 per student. But the property tax we get is a lot less than that, as I remember, it's about 50-something percent. So maybe like $8,000 per student, the property tax we get may be only about $4,000 per student. So even if this, this major will add some extra property tax, $9 million will make up the gap.
Oh, I see what you're doing.
We are still short.
Okay.
From the base funding.
So, yeah.
So how would we get extra? I don't.
So, now I, I understand.
Are we getting extra or not?
Yeah, so the me, the measure is going to generate some additional property tax revenue for the school district, but it's still not, you still may need more. I mean, the, the measure only generates as much property taxes as will be produced by reassessing these commercial properties. There may be, I mean, the city of Cupertino may need more than $5 million, but there's only so much that this measure generates, and, and so the school.
Clarify, this major will generate a certain amount for, but for CUSD, it won't be enough to make it become basic aid.
Ah, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Amount of dollars, CUSD get, it would still be $8,000 per student, not one penny more under this major, right?
No, it will get, it will get more, but it may not get as much more as to.
It will get more.
Yeah.
It only means the state gets to backfill less.
Right, yes, exactly.
But CUSD, per student, doesn't get more.
No, the, the, yes, you, the district does get more. The, the measure has a clear provision that says all the revenue will supplement the money that schools already get. So none of this money will be used to backfill the state. All of it will be used to supplement the revenue that schools currently get. I see what you're worried about, but it can't happen.
So we will be getting beyond the $8,000 per student.
Yes, yes.
Wow, okay.
But you, but you may not get, may not get as much as the district needs, because you can only get a share of as much money as this measure generates. But you will get, but you'll get more than you're getting now. You'll get more than you're getting now because the, the Constitution will prohibit the state from saying, okay, we're going to give the schools money with one hand and take money from the other hand. Even if the legislature wants to do that, they won't be able to.
So basically. 9.7 million divided by 18,000 students is $540 more per student. So rather than 8,000, the district will get 8,500.
So it will, it will $9 million?
9.7 divided by 18,000 students is $540 per student.
So your estimation is CUSD will get $9 million on top of?
On top of what it currently gets.
Right.
Another thing.
I'll assume that Councilmember Willie's math is correct, so that would be, that would be per student.
So $3 million, any property below $3 million will be waived. So that basically means almost every property in Cupertino will not fit in the category where it will be waived. Won't be only big commercial property, it, for Cupertino, it will be probably every commercial property.
Yeah, in a place like Cupertino, probably most of the commercial properties are valued more than 3 million, there may be some that are valued less than 3 million, but that's the, that's the cutoff. So if the, where commercial properties are worth more than 3 million, they'll be, they'll be, they'll be reassessed.
But the business that has 50 employees or lower, they are waived, right? Even if their, their property value is more than $3 million?
Now, if, if a business is, meets the definition of small business, then it gets two benefits. One is all of its personal equipment act is waived, not just the 500,000 that every business would get under Prop 15, but all of the property tax that pays for business equipment will be waived. And secondly, the timing in terms of which the measure will take effect will be delayed to give a smaller business more time to adjust if there's any additional cost that they have to confront.
But then they will, property will still get reassessed even if it's a small business?
Yes, but it's over $3 million, and it say it's a small business that's.
It's just delayed.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Actually, the main thing that, that a small business would get is the opportunity not to pay any taxes on business equipment. If you're small, the, the equipment that you have in your shop may be very expensive in terms of the, it all gets, it all gets calculated into your property tax, and all of that property tax will be waived, all of your business property tax will be waived, your, your real estate property tax, which we reassess.
I was a basketball presenter, I'll log out.
Somebody has an open mic that's not part of this discussion.
Yeah, I'm trying to mute everyone that is not speaking.
I think it's fixed.
Who?
I think it's fixed.
All right, can we please move on to public comment now and finish this? Okay, Kitty, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Shar, Vice Mayor Paul, and Councilmembers Chow, Sinks, and Willie. One issue that the public is having is that we are unable to pull up this agenda item online. We are getting a server error report so that we're unable to read the item, so that we cannot follow along with what you are discussing. And that is a huge problem for public outreach. And on the topic of public outreach, I am curious what outreach was conducted for our absent and largest employer, which is Apple Computer in the city? Can you tell me, were they informed about this agenda item? And so you, you have residents who cannot even pull it up and read what the item is about, we cannot read a staff report because we have a server error going on. And did you ask Apple Computer what they thought about it? Now, we are supposed to, excuse me, we are supposed to be a representative government, and we have a responsibility, and yet it appears that we have had no representation from Apple Computer on the item. Please continue this item and provide data in order to make an informed decision, because we are a data-driven community and we make intelligent decisions. I'm very concerned that this is being rushed through, and all of the players and your residents are not at the table for this discussion. Thank you.
So Bill, can you check on this and see why we're, we're not able to pull these things up?
Mayor, yes, I'm looking at it right now. We are looking into the problem. I was able to pull up the agenda prior to the meeting, however, we are having issues right now. We will report back when it's up.
And if we do have to continue it, I mean, there is time for that. The election is not till November. I also would point out. Um, I also would point out, um, to Kitty Moore that the name of the company in Cupertino is not Apple Computer, it is Apple. Thank you. Next is Victor Vasquez, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Council, uh, for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to speak in favor of Prop 15. On January sixth, twenty twenty, this council passed an important resolution affirming its commitments to stand in solidarity with the black community, recognizing that racial injustice particular towards the black community has been building for decades. Doubtless violence by our own government only serves to incite more violence. This is a powerful statement and I commend you for this. As we know, racial injustice is also connected to economic injustice and unequal redistribution of resources by our governments. For decades, California has used institutionalized racist methods of distributing resources for our educational systems and our cities. This impacts our black indigenous and Raza communities and all of us. This has resulted in unhealthy, unsafe, and neglect, and neglectful conditions which impact our life opportunities. At times, these conditions can lead to death or incarceration, unequal conditions, and has racialized the impact on our communities. Prop 15 provides a historic opportunity to change these unequal conditions and to stand in solidarity racially and economically with all communities across the state of California. I want to thank you, the City Council, for considering Prop 15, as it will generate billions of dollars for our schools and public services. As you heard, four point nine million for the city general funds that would impact all services for all the residents that lived in this, in the city. Money that can be invested into your communities, money that can be invested to historically underfunded people, but, uh, services that could also be taken away, um, that should not, that will not be used to tax other residents, but things that could generate opportunities for all. Homeowners will be excluded and commercial property values in the three million as well. It's time that we also ask our corporations to pay their, pay a share. Some of these newer corporations are already doing so. So for me, passing Prop 15, it's not a question of what it will do for me, but what would it do for your residents? What would it would do for your students? And what, and what it will do for California as a way to step forward towards a more racially just society? I urge you to support the staff recommendation to draft a resolution and support Prop 15 and pass that resolution. It's time that we continue to be part, be part of historical moment for racial justice in our country. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Victor. Next we have, um, Stanley Young, welcome.
Welcome, thank you, Mr. Scharf, Mayor Scharf, and Honorable, uh, City Council. My name is Stanley Young with IFPT Local Twenty-One. I represent the city employees of Cupertino. I am only taking their position tonight, but also as a resident of Santa Clara County. I strongly urge the council to simply do the right thing. Many of the questions tonight have gotten the weeds in this, but I want you to focus on the bigger picture. Corporations need to pay their fair share. This benefits every single employee of Cupertino, every student, every resident, and every single council member. Do the right thing and pass this measure. This is the right thing for Cupertino, it's the right thing for Santa Clara County, it's the right thing for the state of California. This will bring at least five million dollars into the city of Cupertino and hundreds of millions of dollars into Santa Clara County. At a time when I see students knock on my door for fundraising for soccer equipment, musical equipment, or any sports or the arts, what are we doing? I'm originally from Akron, Ohio, and I thought of California as the best educated state in the union. We're ranked forty-first in California now. My son's twelve years old. Let's do the right thing, fund education and fund communities. Yes, on Prop 15, and thank you for your time. And I appreciate the comments and the wisdom by Bob Ronstein and Jessica Volmer on this issue. Please do the right thing. The city of Cu, Cupertino City Council can make history tonight by voting yes on Prop 15. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, JR Fruin, welcome.
Yeah, I'll keep my comments really brief here. I, I canvassed for this initiative. In fact, I ran into Mayor Scharf while I was canvassing for this initiative. I, I hope that you had the opportunity to sign a petition in, in favor of it. Even if this initiative weren't able to close the entire gap on, um, CUSD's, uh, budget, frankly, anything that can get it to a point of fiscal stability is a good thing. This will help it push in that direction. So I, I sincerely hope that you support Prop 15. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And last, we have, um, Jennifer Griffin, welcome.
Um, hello, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes, hi, this is Jennifer Griffin, and, uh, we've had a real interesting discussion on this. Um, I just had a couple of comments, observations, um, like, I know, three million dollars would be affecting a lot of corporations in Santa Clara County because, let's face it, three million dollars is almost the price of two to three houses. So you're going to have a lot of businesses affected by this. I'm going, the other comment I had is if you take a corporation like Google, we all know Google, it's in Mountain View. They have been acquiring a lot of land recently. They have purchased scads and scads of tech parks in Mountain View and, um, Palo Alto in the last three to four years. They purchased most of a tech company that I used to work at, um, lock, Stock and Barrel in Palo Alto. They have purchased the bulk of downtown San Jose at Diradon. Does this, and I, I believe that at some point they expect to convert a lot of that tech park land into housing by rezoning. I was interested in the seventy-five percent, if it is seventy-five percent residential or apartments, that they're not affected. How does this affect a company like Google? I know the parent company is Alphabet, but we haven't talked about that. Um, I'm of the mind of Kitty that we need to kind of not sashay into this really quickly. We may be affecting a lot more companies, and I would like to know, how does this affect a company like Google? Um, they're kind of like the ten thousand pound gorilla in the room that we're not discussing. What about all the land in Diradon? Hundreds of acres of prime San Jose downtown that is now owned by one company? How does this affect them? Is, is, is Google going to be reassessed? And what about all this land potentially that could wind up as new housing? We need to talk about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Um, there is no more, uh, request for public comment, so we'll bring it back to the council. Um, is there any more discussion, or does somebody want to make a motion?
I wanted to make a little update before your discussion is the, uh, technology issue that, um, Kitty Moore mentioned has to do with Granicus. Uh, so all we can do is report the issue, and we are currently doing a workaround to see if we can do something with our system to make it work.
Okay, because I, I mean, I can see it, and I legislate, I just can't see it if I go to the city website.
I cannot see the agenda item either. I'd like to make a motion for us not to take a position on this item. The reason is, I think we have heard, I personally, I'm in favor of this proposition. I think it does help, um, if I can check the effect, that it seems to help CUSD, but I don't know when the money will come. It won't be next year, I think it's probably five years. And, uh, but then I'm concerned that when, we have heard only one side of the story, and a staff report didn't really have pros and cons of the, this major, because I think it was just out, the draft was out this morning. And, uh, as we can see that, um, we haven't heard from, haven't done outreach to HLP to people who might be affected, because it's not just the biggest property owners. Every commercial property in Cupertino will be affected by the three million dollar, uh, not cut off line. I, I, I think I'm in favor of that, but then I, I think I also, whenever there are, there is some, something that just, remember these housing bills, as, uh, a county board supervisor rushed to support a, a bill. And we were upset at that time because they did, they, they were pushed by advocacy groups to take a position before they even had time to actually look at facts, to look at evidence. And if we take a position, now we are doing the same thing. I would rather, there are eleven other propositions. There will be more propositions every year. I don't think the council should be taking position on something that the voters will vote on. I supported to put this on the council agenda because I want to get data, data on how much, um, financial impact is there to the city. But I didn't get that today. I only got a number in the staff report without the supporting consultant's report. That's the death item, yes, but I didn't have time to read that. The public didn't have time to read that. So I think the purpose of having it on the council agenda is to make the information available to the public. This will be the financial benefit to the city, to the public, to the school district, and let them decide. So I, I hope that we don't take a position on this or any other propositions in this election. Can I do, make a motion on that? To not take a position?
I'll, I'll speak up, you know, uh, a little different, you know, I, I think, uh, Councilman Chow is looking for a second, but no, I, our, our, our schools are so underfunded and. John, we're having a lot of trouble hearing you. There's a lot of static. I have not changed anything on my end. Try turning off your virtual background, that may help. Does that help? No.
No. I think we can understand him anyway.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah, we can understand you. It sounds terrible, but it's all right.
We'll just live with it. And this happens with Zoom sometimes, and I don't understand why. It's happened to me.
So, uh, our, our schools are just so under, underfunded, you know, being LCFF, uh, as opposed to the other districts that are basic aid. And the fact that, uh, Measure O was defeated, you know, that was hope to get the money to keep our schools going, and yet it didn't pass. And so now here's something else that's on the horizon, and if we can, you know, uh, help, help educate the community that this really is an important step for our schools. Now, I'm normally very, very cautious. I don't like to undo things that, you know, we do. I'd rather take time, and so I appreciate Councilman Chow wanting to spend a little more time to think about it. But, you know, there is no Plan B that I've seen in terms of funding of our school. Uh, without this, you know, the schools are just really going to, um, be desperate. So I, I think we need to be bold in this, in this aspect, um, and I do think we need to take a position that it's a position, you know, largely for our schools and, and, yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you, John. And I, um, yeah, I don't think this is the time to equivocate. Um, if, if corporations in the city saw this on the agenda and didn't like it, they were certainly free to come here tonight and speak, and after we draft the resolution, uh, I mean, the motion is to draft the resolution and, um, and we will, you know, vote on it at, in the future at, at the, at another meeting. Um, and am I wrong about this? Are we drafting it now, or is it all drafted and we're voting on it?
It's drafted, uh.
There is a draft resolution, but you could request further amendments if you wanted to.
Okay, then I'm wrong, sorry. Um, but yeah, this is, you know, this is so obvious, it is so unfair what's gone on with Prop thirteen and how the burden has shifted and the way that ownership transfers without, not really transferring, so it never gets reassessed. You have shopping centers that have been sold multiple times, but have never been, been reassessed. Uh, commercial buildings, I mean, the, I mean, this isn't radical, this is just fairness, um, that people, you know, that the corporations have to pay their fair share. And, I mean, look at what happened with the recent tax cut where, uh, the large corporation, literally billions and billions of dollars that they're saving in federal income taxes because of the corporate tax cuts, and that's money that doesn't flow to the communities, um, doesn't flow, you know, flow down from the federal government to the states, to the cities and counties. Um, so we're in desperate straits here, and, um, this is not a lot of money for the schools, but it's, you know, it won't make a difference. So, um, I would make a motion to.
We can all endorse the, the.
Sorry, I'm, I'm talking now.
We can endorse it personally.
Okay, right, I'm talk, I'm talking, Aliang, thank you. Um, so I would make a motion to adopt a resolution supporting statewide measure, Prop fifteen, which increases funding for public schools, community colleges, and local governments by changing tax assessment of commercial and industrial property through an initiative constitutional amendment on the November third, twenty twenty ballot. And I'll second that gladly. Okay, so it's, um, motion and seconded, so now, you know, week before voting, we can have more discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I, if you want, I can go next. Okay, sure, go. I, I agree with you, and I agree with John. Uh, you know, uh, if you talk to the trustees at CUSD about what's happening there, what's happening with staff, um, they're really in desperate straits, and I think the money, if I understand it, right, starts in twenty twenty-one. So we can all pretend that we don't know and put our head in the sand, but honestly, we know what the situation is there. Anybody, uh, who wasn't able to access Granicus cannot, could have readily Googled Prop fifteen or the enabling legislation and read all about it. So, you know, yeah, we can debate everything, meeting after meeting, and not take a stand, but I think that, uh, taking a stand tonight demonstrates our, uh, our serious intention to support our schools. And also, uh, I, you know, I will remind you, this is not an insignificant amount of money for, and for the city of Cupertino, four point nine million. We also, as we know, right, the county is in, in, uh, especially with the pandemic, uh, is, is struggling, uh, to provide basic human services, services for the homeless and everything else. And, uh, they will, if you look at that Blue Sky report, again, Liang, it is, you can go look it up, it was sent out at five sixteen PM. Um, if you go look at that report, you'll see that the county, uh, is getting a, a lot of support out of this measure, and I think at this time, when we have seen income inequality in Silicon Valley grow to such extent, uh, it's, for me, given the pandemic, uh, yeah, it is, it is vital that we support our schools and, and our local government. And Stephen makes a great point about the Trump tax cut, uh, that, that allowed large corporations to enjoy windfalls and, and landing, uh, uh, tax, uh, that would have been collected, land money here. Um, uh, they, they received a, a big part of that, and I, I think this is just, uh, basic fairness. And I'm confident, as other states do, that our assessor, uh, if this one wants to retire and we need another one, so be it, but, uh, we'll get an assessor who can go figure this out. I have, I'm confident. So, thank you, I, I will, I'm supportive.
Okay, Darcy, do you have anything?
No, I don't have any comment on this.
Okay.
So do I get to ask more questions now?
Go, go ahead, ask as many as you'd like.
So, um, I am in support of this proposition, I'm just really against the city council taking position on this issue that will be on the ballot. I think we should all endorse it if, as, uh. I think we should all endorse it as a council member, but we are, even after we take a position, the city cannot campaign for this issue. So this is like opening, there could be other requests that ask us to support Prop 16, Prop 20, Prop whatever. Do we want to spend time endorsing everyone or not endorsing everyone? I don't think this is, this is something the city council should do for a ballot major. I think if we individually, I, I do think this is something that CUSD does need. The parcel tax didn't pass. It's, it was mismanaged from what I heard. They didn't really run a good campaign. The consultant didn't really reach out to people, unfortunately. So yes, this is something that will be great for CUSD, and I will be telling people to vote yes, but I'm just not feeling comfortable for the city council to take a position on a ballot major. And I do have a question, if, I don't know if there are people in the audience, who knows? On the argument against this proposition, it mentioned, it's probably not true, but I'd, I'd like to confirm, it mentioned that even home-based business or gardeners might be affected by this major. Is that true or not? Does anyone, those, the two people who were very knowledgeable, are they still here? So they have left? That was the question.
Bob Rownstein is still here. Welcome, yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. Home-based businesses are exempt.
So home-based, the, the arguments against these, those are not true, right? They say, they throwing a bomb, throwing a bomb to things, saying those will be affected. Those are not, right?
If they say home-based businesses, businesses are affected, they are wrong.
So like gardeners, they won't be affected?
Well, look, you said home-based businesses. If, if somebody is a gardener and operates out of their home, they won't be affected. If it's a big gardening corporation that, you know, has a very big, owns five acres and it's a big business, then it could be reassessed. But a gardener working out of his home, that's a home-based business, he will not be reassessed.
That's good to know. Okay. And also that I remember seeing that the assessment won't happen, it will happen next year, 2021. I thought it would be delayed. When will we see it?
The, the process of reassessing properties will begin in fiscal year 22, 23. So...
22, 23.
Yeah, so you...
So we won't see higher property tax until 22, 23?
That's correct.
So not next year?
That's right.
Because some people were saying we will get the money next year, that's not true.
I stand corrected.
Less likely, 2023, all the properties will get reassessed?
They, no, they will, because they all can't be reassessed at once.
Oh.
They'll start working through the list in, beginning in the lead date of 22, 23, and as long as it takes, they'll get them all. But, I mean, some are going to be, you know, everybody can't be the first one done, so some will get done in January, some will get done later in the year.
And so they will all be done in one, about one year, or it might take five years?
Well, I can't tell you exactly. The legislate, the measure says that there's two years, that they should have a phase-in plan for two years. My expectation is that the properties that are oldest and biggest will be done first, but some of the smaller ones where, you know, they were only bought a couple of years ago, it may take a while before they get to them.
So the county would, assessor's office would prioritize this?
Well, look, what would probably happen is the legislature, which will put together a task force to manage the phase-in, that task force will say, okay, the smartest way to manage the phase-in is to do whatever strategy they suggest. I think what they're going to suggest is start with the biggest properties that are the oldest, the ones that have paid the smallest share of property taxes, and get those done, and then move down the list to smaller properties that were reassessed relatively recently.
Okay, that's good to know. I actually, I'm not worried about the big commercial properties because whatever tax extra, it's something they should have been paying for the past 20, 30 years. So it's not, they are just paying what they are supposed to pay anyway. And the imbalance exists, and we need to fix the loophole. And I understand in Texas, they reassess, I think, every five years, is it? Even for residential properties. So it can be done. But the Texas assessor's office do need to hire more people, and they are estimating about $1 billion extra to, for everywhere in California to implement this. But this $1 billion will be covered by, by the extra tax that we will collect. But initially, county will have to get a loan from the state to cover the startup cost, right? Because we will need to hire people before we can collect the tax. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Can we do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Chow?
I'll stand. I just don't think the council should take a...
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Councilmember Sinks?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries with Chow extending.
Okay, uh, next, let's see. So Lifetime Tennis, number 21, has been postponed. Number, we're on to item 22, consider adding a housing survey item and removing the housing program for Deansah College students item. This is for the work, the 202021 work plan. Can we have the staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ben Tho, Director of Community Development. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We don't have a PowerPoint slideshow for you, but we do have a staff report attached to the agenda. That kind of gives a nice little summary on the recommended actions that we're, we're seeking tonight, as well as a little bit of background. What we have here with us tonight is Kerry Huesler, our housing manager, and Bill Mitchell, Chief Technology Officer, is here as well. When the conversation gets a little too technical, Bill can help us out a little bit. If you, you may recall that during the work program discussion on June 2, council directed staff to bring this item back with more details, including some options. So here, that's why we're here tonight. So with that, Kerry, if you want to kind of add anything additional for free.
And remember, since the public can't access this, you probably, and there's no PowerPoint, you're going to have to go into some detail.
Mr. Mayor?
Kerry, you're muted.
I'm not muted.
Mr. Mayor, I did just want to say, point out that the, the public can access the searchable packet through the city records portal, the digital archive.
Oh, okay, thank you.
City council packets. They're available.
Okay. Go ahead, Kerry.
Kerry, we're not hearing you.
Is she muted? We don't hear you at all, Kerry.
I don't even see her on the...
Oh, I see her, and she's not muted, but we're not hearing her.
So Kerry, maybe you can switch your, your microphone. While, while you do that, I'll take this one, and as soon as you jump in, you can provide more details. Again, this is an item we'll bring back to you as it was heard on June 2, a part of a program discussion. This is a new proposed work program, and staff is back with some, four options with pros and cons listed for those four options. Those survey methods would include an open town hall, Survey Monkey with a password, Survey Monkey with a unique ID, and a paper survey with a unique ID. What we did is also some discussion with our Chief Technology Officer, Phil Mitchell here, as well as a third-party consultant on the costs, and that's also listed on the, on our staff report discussion. The, and the costs range from approximately $9,000 up to $2,400, depending on the extent of, of the, the survey.
I think $24,000.
Right, so, so that is one of our recommendations is, is for a budget adjustment, not to exceed $24,000 to fund this survey. In return, the work program currently has a housing program for Deansah College students. What we're seeing in, in our participation with the college is that the college is taking the lead on, on this, on the student housing solutions. And of course, the city will continue to be, to be a partner when there's a plan being drafted. What we're saying here is that we will delay that, that particular item so we can focus on the housing survey here. And so with that, I will just end our, our presentation here, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I see Kerry's back on, too.
Okay.
Still can't hear her.
Cannot hear Kerry, okay.
How about, how about now?
Oh, that's perfect, Kerry.
Okay, great. I've got my iPhone. Thank you for your patience. I, I'm just adding to Ben's presentation that I'm, I'm here to answer questions. Thank you for hitchhitting for me, Ben.
Okay, so let's have council questions, and then we'll go to public comments. I see two people already with hands raised, so, yeah, I don't have any questions. So let's go next to, John, do you want to go?
So I don't have questions, but I'll have comments after the residents.
Okay, great. Rod? Okay, you're muted, but you're shaking your head. Okay, Darcy?
I do not have questions, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Chow, do you have questions before we go to public comment?
No.
Okay, great. We will go to public comment. We have Jean Bedord, welcome. Jean, I can't unmute you, you have to unmute yourself.
Let's try, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Sharp, Vice Mayor Paul, and council members. It is getting late. That wee debate took much too long. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime resident of Cupertino. I am here to state my opposition to this proposal to remove the housing program for Deansah students from the city work plan and substitute a housing survey. First of all, there have been a number of speakers in the last six months who have clearly shown the need for improved housing for Deansah students. This is a known need, backed up by data that's already been collected by the college itself as well as the city. This data can be used to develop an action plan. Secondly, what is the purpose of the survey? In my professional life, I've done survey research and also bought survey studies. Good surveys are hard to do. The most important question is, what will the results be used for? Survey research is opinion, not demographic data, not housing stock data. I see no demonstrated value in spending scarcity resources on yet another survey. We've been surveyed to death already. Time to take action, not another survey. Thirdly, the survey is technology-based, which means opinions from older adults and those without internet access may not be included. As we are finding out at the senior center, not everyone in our city has access to digital technology. Fourthly, the Deansah housing item was supported and approved by the Housing Commission, yet they were not consulted on this substitution. Isn't council corrupting the whole commission process? I urge you to vote no on this proposal. It's simply a waste of city resources and community time. Let's use our resources more wisely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Next is Neil McClintock, welcome. Neil, are you there? Oh, I need to allow you to, okay, go ahead, Neil.
Hey. Like Jean said, it's getting late, so I'll try to keep it pretty short. I think this is a terrible decision personally. I'm a former Deansah student, and a lot of Deansah students probably agree, if not all of them, this is desperately needed. I, you know, if you want to do a survey, that's, that's great, but in terms of the budget being stretched so thin, I'm not sure that it makes more sense to run a survey instead of looking into how we can help homeless community college students. I'm not usually one to say this, but I think in this case, it's difficult to walk and chew gum at the same time. We are in a pandemic, it hurts the budget. And so when we make choices like this, it reflects on our values. And I want our values to be that we care about those who are most struggling in our community. And to me, that means keeping the Deansah housing plan as opposed to bringing in a housing survey. I also do share the thoughts that I'm wondering what exactly the purpose of the housing survey is. At the end of the day, like, public outreach is only going to tell us so much in terms of housing, and we're never going to be able to capture the entire audience. And also, this is another point I would make, when you're thinking about Deansah students, they don't live in Cupertino. Do they get to be asked about housing in the survey? The answer's probably not, nor do the people get asked who might potentially, you know, live in that housing. And so I just, I don't think it's worth using $25,000 for a survey. Sunnyvale tried to do a housing survey, I'm not entirely sure on how that turned out, but when I opened it, I could tell that most residents weren't going to understand it. And at the end of the day, it's up to council to make those really difficult decisions that are highly complex, and it's not reasonable to expect every resident to understand the technicalities of what kind of housing is needed, RENA, et cetera. It just doesn't make sense. So given the situation, please do not gut the Deansah housing plan in favor of the survey. Thank you.
Okay, next, JR Frewen. Wow, I don't know what's going on there.
Now, I'll echo the last two speakers, and I, I hope that you will value people over opinions. Thank you.
JR, this is definitely, are you not fearful?
No.
Everybody's echoing. Uh, now it's okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so my comments are super brief. I, I agree with the last two speakers. I hope that you will prioritize people over opinions. Thank you.
Wow, thank you for being so brief. Okay, there is no more public comment, so we can bring it back to council.
I do have two emails to read.
Oh, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Sure, this is from Lloyd Holmes, the president of Deansah College. First, I would like to say that as the new president of Deansah College as of July 1, I look forward to meeting each member of the city council as well as city staff. I'm writing today, however, to express my disappointment at the message sent by today's agenda, item number 22, the elimination of $50,000 in funding for a partnership with Deansah College on a student home share program, with those, with those funds to be diverted to funding a city housing survey. I ask that city council continue to be attentive to the needs of our, of students at your local college, including the serious issues of housing insecurity and homelessness. I am aware that both city council and the Housing Commission have heard from members of college senior staff on the issue, which remains significant during this pandemic, and that these senior staff members have been working closely with city staff over the past year and more. We work to inform students of available resources, including Catholic Charities Home Share Program, which matches students with those in the community who have a room available to rent. Once we learned how well-established this program is, although certainly there are significant associated costs, we told city staff that in our view, it is not necessary for Cupertino to, in effect, recreate this wheel with the college. Having said that, however, we were surprised to learn that the... Having said that, however, we were surprised to learn that the funding as it relates to Deansa College is proposed to be diverted and are concerned that this may send the message that the city council is not supportive of the demonstrable needs of our students. Please refer to the more extensive letter submitted to the city council and city staff earlier today. We ask for reaffirmation from city council that it supports efforts on behalf of the students of Deansa College with unmet basic human needs. Thank you, Lloyd Holmes, President, Deansa College. And my second email is from Peggy Griffin. Dear Honorable, Honorable Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Paul, and council members, I support option four, mail survey to each resident with a household-specific code. Although this option is the most expensive, it guarantees that the data you collect is correct. Sending to each home ensures that you reach everyone, even those that don't do online surveys. Options one through three do not guarantee that the data is actually from Cupertino residents. Why waste money on invalid data? Why pay for trash data? Bad results, in results, inaccurate analysis out. Oh, bad data in, results in, inaccurate analysis out. If you're going to do this survey, do it right, get accurate data. Thank you, Peggy Griffin. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. So, um, I just do want to tell people in the audience that things get put on the agenda if, if the mayor does it or if two council members request it. Not everything that gets put on the agenda, um, is approved, but we're required to put things on the agenda, um, if two council members request it. And that's how it gets on there. So we'll bring it back for discussion. Who would like to go first?
I'm, I'm happy to go first.
Okay, go ahead, John.
So, you know, um, two different important topics. Uh, so the first one, uh, development in our community is one of, if not the biggest impact on our community. On how much housing, how much, you know, going forward, housing is the biggest component. Marina, two hundred apartments, the Hamptons, six hundred apartments, Rocco's SB 35, uh, twenty-four hundred apartments, uh, the Oaks, uh, two hundred and ninety apartments. Housing is the biggest development, uh, factor in our community. And I strongly believe we need to know what the residents, uh, feel, what the residents do and don't support. Rental versus for sale. BMR with, uh, needing additional density to pay for the BMR unit. Is it going to be very low, extremely low? Is it going to be housing for teachers? That, those questions are vital for the decisions that we're going to need to make. In a few weeks or a few months, the Oaks is going to be coming to the city council. And that is a housing project. What kind of decisions should we make for our residents? Would this survey help us with that one? It would have if it had already happened. We need to, to hear from our residents. I, I've been keeping tabs and city staff has been doing surveys. Here's green volunteer opportunity survey. Survey on food habits. These are Cupertino surveys. Survey on the Cupertino shuttle. Survey on the Carmen Bridge, uh, Carmen Road Bridge. Survey on the center city parking. All these things are important for us. If we're not engaging the residents, if we're only waiting for the few that are able to come to a city council meeting and tell us, that's not engaging the sixty-four thousand residents of this community. On any given survey, yeah, we're not going to get sixty-four thousand responses, but we're going to be more in tune to our community that elected us. And that we are here and have a duty to represent and make the decisions that they want us to make. Now, I agree, a lot of Deansa students don't live in Cupertino and would not be directly able to take the survey, although I do support anyone being able to take the survey, but the results put into two buckets. Cupertino residents that elected us and, uh, community at large, by all means. So I, I can't stress enough that, you know, to make these important decisions for the community and not have more information. Did I hear a lot at the election when I knocked on doors? In the three to four minutes that I had? Yes, I asked them those questions, but I need more, I need ongoing, real-time information to make the important ones. We make a lot of small decisions, we made some tonight. We debatement stuff. We don't need community, uh, uh, surveys for those types of things, but on, uh, traffic that's going to impact our residents, yes, I do think we're going to need a survey to, to find out where they, they see the greatest impacts to them and where they'd like to see us make improvements. Without that, we're, we're trying to make right decisions, but without truly having the information that we need. I'm, I'm very, uh, understanding for the, uh, Deansa College president that, that spoke. I'm not trying, I'm not interested in taking anything away from Deansa, but I do think that Deansa College, uh, housing, I mean, they just got Measure G and Measure H. They've got billions of dollars that they should be deploying for their, uh, housing needs as they see fit. And we, as a city council, have our dominant, uh, decision process is for our community here. And by all means, we should work together, but let's not confuse that the, the residents of Cupertino elected us to represent them and we need to utilize every resident engagement mechanism that we can to, to do that. There are several different options, different ways to make sure that it's going to be accurate codes and, and addresses and things of that nature. I would like to leave that to staff to decide which ones, let them look at other surveys that have done by other communities and which one would work the best, fit the best, be the most accurate. Twenty-four thousand dollars, it's not chump change, but for the input that we get, for our, our city budget is somewhere around, uh, uh, gosh, what's our city budget running at this year? Twenty-four thousand dollars for us to do a better job? Absolutely. There's no substitute for education and this is part of that education. It's an ongoing education for us and our residents and that's what we're here for. So I, I sympathize with, with the speakers tonight and, you know, I want to do as much as I can for them, but I have to stand up for, I need to be in touch with as many of the sixty-four thousand residents as I possibly can. So, thank you.
Okay, um, Leon, would you like to go?
Okay, so how much was the bond major that was the voters approved for Deansa? That was, I think, eight hundred ninety-eight billion dollars.
No, not eight hundred million.
Eight hundred million dollars, yeah, okay. And I remember that the language in the ballot major include housing for either faculty or students, right? So, and also, Deansa College is supposed to be a community college. Ideally, students should come from community. And as a result, in fact, the state law, when it decides how many, how many housing units a city should provide for, for the residents, they include UC, they include the state universities, but they don't include the community colleges. The reason state law did not include the community colleges is because I think the students are supposed to live in the community. But right now, the Anza College is drawing students from out of this area so that those students come from elsewhere and they, they need housing around the Anza College. So this is an issue created by the Anza College. We, as a city, we are happy to assist and in whatever way we can. The home match program, I like that program, I really want to see that to go forward. But it's a program that really, it takes partnership between the city and the nonprofit and the college to be successful. And so I think the college should be leading the program, not the city. And the city can assist in what they would be, because essentially, it's going to be housing their students. And the reason why we need the housing survey right now, we are not just out of the blue we want to do a survey, because we are in the middle of a housing element cycle that we are required by the state to deliver a certain number of housing units. And this cycle ends in 2023 and the new cycle starts then. And before the new cycle starts, I think we will soon learn for the next housing element cycle, our assigned number of housing units might be six times more than what we have this year. This cycle right now, we have allocated a, a thousand units. Next cycle, likely we will see six thousand units assigned to Cupertino. Where should they go? We, we need to figure out where they need to go by 2022 so that we can deliver, submit a housing element plan by 2023. So we don't really have a lot of time because, uh, housing element usually takes, uh, a whole year at least because we need to do a CQ, uh, for, uh, environmental impact analysis for all the proposed sites. And for each site, how tall we, what kind, what type of housing this, this community needs, there are a lot of questions we need answer on. So this is not just a survey that's standing alone, it's a survey that prepares Cupertino for the future. For all of you who want to see more housing in Cupertino, this is a survey you should support because this is a survey that will tell us where we could see more housing, where it will fit, how tall, how dense, and what type. Do, do we need more for sale? Do we need more rental? How big? Two-bedroom, three-bedroom, or a lot more studios? And, uh, this, these are things that we need to figure out, we can, ideally, we don't want the council sitting here, the five of us, figure things out, um, randomly, right? We want to engage the residents through the process. So this, this survey, I think John has, yeah, it is very hard to design a survey. The first version of the survey that was sent out, um, many people were upset, it took, I took, I spent a lot of time wrote comments to the city manager that we need to provide more background information so that people who take the survey also learn about, uh, what the city already have zoned and then what we can have on top. So that it's also an educational process. So we educate the residents about the current zoning, what we can, where we can do more, what it means when we do this, what it means when we do that. This is, this is something that's necessary to help us engage our residents early on so we won't have people come getting mad at the end that, um, they are unhappy with decisions that we make. So, so I think, um, I hope the home match program will continue. I don't know why we have, we have to be put in this position of either this or the other. Um, why this cannot be one more program that the council supports? I don't know why we are put in this position, but I hope for home match program, ideally, it is the Deansa who should be taking, college who should be taking the lead. So the people who really care about homeless, uh, students in Deansa, get the Deansa College Board to start a task force on this. And the city staff, I think, would be willing, and the Housing Commission will be willingly support that their, their initiative to work on the housing, the homeless students, because really, the city is not equipped to handle homeless, um, students. We, even the homeless that's, um, wolf, we are not equipped to handle that because we get, I found out also recently that the city only gets seven percent of the property tax dollar we get. The reason is the county gets thirty-four percent. Why is that? Because the county is supposed, supposed to provide social services, homeless programs. So these are things that the county is supposed to provide. Homeless students are supposed to also be the duty of the county. We can assist, but we are not really equipped to handle this, um, homeless or social services. So it's not that the city don't want to help, it's just we, this is how the tax allocation is, is done. So I think for us, we focus on our residents and, uh, other issues, we can always, um, do our best to help. I wish we don't have to choose. So, yeah, okay.
Oh, oh, let me unmute. Oh, okay, um, Rod?
So, so I do have a, a question about this. One of the public speakers observed that this, initially, this initiative, uh, in working with Deansa, went through our Housing Commission, but, but, uh, this new proposal has not, and I'm wondering why not? I mean, if, they're both housing matters and you're saying we can't, apparently we can't do both, so therefore we have to pick and some members of council would rather do A than B. And I'm, I'm, I could be supportive of a housing survey, but I'm just, from a procedural standpoint, I'm just wondering why we would have our Housing Commission go to work and make, you know, have a project and then circumvent them when it comes time to, uh, yeah, just overruling this. Can somebody talk to this? I'm also very confused by the input, and I was, I keep looking for it here and I can't find the input from Deansa College and that, so I'm a little confused about what they, they want and expect from us. So maybe somebody who's been talking directly to them can, can, you know, offer some perspective on, on what Lloyd, on the new, um, president, uh, said. I, I, I was confused, I got two messages out of it.
Sure, uh, Carrie, feel free to jump in. I believe, um, our staff have been involved in discussions with, uh, the college regarding this particular item, uh, the item being the, uh, housing, the homeless students for Deansa.
So if there, if there was a letter or an email that came to us today, where is that? When did it, who sent it and when?
Carrie, do you know any more information about that?
Am I, am I clear? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I know that the, um, I, I talked with Deansa yesterday, um, with the two staffers at Deansa, Rob and Marissa, that have been our partners in the last two public hearing processes. And they, I worked with the city clerk's office to help them submit their letter for public comment tonight, so I'm not sure if that was emailed, maybe Kirsten could speak to that, but they weren't able to commit to attending a late night meeting, but they wanted that information out there. And council members think I can clarify what they really wanted for their input. They really wanted to make sure that there wasn't any type of perception that the city wasn't supportive of Deansa. any type of perception that the city wasn't supportive of Dianza housing initiatives. When we talked yesterday, a lot of what we discussed was that Dianza has momentum on housing programs. And in fact, the city worked with them to link to the Catholic Charities program that they've discussed. I think they are going to come back to the city with a concrete plan. That's what we discussed, when they can really clarify what our role is. And so we can put this back on the work program next year if we, if we, if we choose to. And there might be some more movement on it. And Ben, do you want to speak to the Housing Commission piece? Or would you like me to, to answer that?
Well, why don't you go ahead? I'll, I'll fill in.
Sure. So when the Housing Commission adopted the work program in early July, they adopted what was in front of them. And I think for me, it was our understanding at the staff level that amendments to the work program would come back directly to city council, to city council. And so that's, that's why we brought it directly to you.
Okay. And did, did the clerk read some correspondence earlier from the president of Dianza College?
Yeah, yes.
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I just missed it. Can you, can you do that again?
We saw you, Rod, your eyes were closed, so, no, just kidding.
No, no, I, I just, I'm, I'm really trying to understand where they're coming from. I mean, we have a lot of public speakers concerned about this. We bypassed our own Housing Commission who adopted it. And, you know, I, I'm not feeling very sanguine about just saying, yeah, drop the one for the other. I don't mind a survey. But I also, I'm, I'm also not really very sure, you know, we ought to be, especially at this time, saying, yeah, what the heck, wait till next year and we'll put you back on the work program. I don't, that, that didn't sound like the tone of the letter. Could you just repeat the, the key parts of that letter, Kirsten, so I can hear that again? Since I don't have anything written in front of me that I can find? Oh, okay. Thank you.
You blow that up, Kirsten? Zoom in. Okay, does he have a conclusion? Or is that it? Is it just that one page?
That was, uh, that was the first one that they submitted. And then they sent another one.
Well, it doesn't even have a signature. It feels like we only read half a memo or something.
Let me just read the, I'll just read.
Don't read it, can you just post it?
Uh, yes, well, um.
We can read it. It's faster if we read it and you just put it up on the screen.
Located, uh, here it is.
I like that first page, I could see that.
This is it, okay.
Okay, lovely.
Okay, can you see that?
We could, and then it shrunk. We could for a minute.
You can't see the email at all right now?
Oh, we see it, but for, for a few seconds it was visible and then it shrunk down.
Now we have to be, uh, we have to have eagle eyes to read.
Oh, shoot, sorry, I lost it.
From what I just read, it's the same as the other letter, just in email form.
I.
That's what it looked like to me, too.
I was just trying to read all the way to the end and understand, trying to understand where it's coming from.
Well, while Kirsten is pulling that up, if it helps, I can highlight one of the comments. It says, "I ask that city councils continue to be attentive to the needs of students at your local college, including the serious issues of housing insecurity and homelessness." And so when I talked with Dianza staffers yesterday, we discussed the city programs that Dianza students who are housing insecure or homeless could currently access, which include, and of course, they would need to be Cupertino residents to access the emergency assistance funds for tenants impacted by COVID. And then the Dianza students could continue to take advantage of the food pantry at West Valley Community Services. So there are some initiatives out there that are already available to students. And, and we, we're going to work with them to market that a little more on their college.
Okay, but if we approve this resolution, that would drop this from your efforts, correct?
Not those items.
Yeah, could you, but what we are dropping, I cannot access the agenda. What exactly is the original program that was on the work program? What exactly was the content of the homeless housing?
Sure, let me pull up the, it is the Housing Program for Dianza College Students, where we would continue to explore solutions for homeless and housing insecure students, assist in the development of a housing program for homeless students, investigate partnership with Dianza on student housing and transportation solutions. So the city would play a role in those efforts. And they still, they still seem to continue with those efforts. If it is removed from the work program, we just wouldn't be able to play as active as a, a role. We would just remain a partner and a supporter.
So this kind of program needs Dianza to take the lead anyway, right? We can't really just go around and do that.
It would be, it would be crucial that Dianza support the effort to move forward. As it would be there, yeah.
So what was your original plan for this item that, so dropping this item, what, what difference would that make for you? Initially, you were planning to be taking the lead, to push for some program, and now you will be following their lead? Is that the difference? That you'll continue to support them as we always do, right?
It just won't be prioritized like a work program item is. We would assist as we could. And then maybe as they get to defining our role, maybe next year we put it back on to be more active in that role. And that, and as a reminder to, and I've heard this question before, so I'll attempt to answer. As a reminder to council, the work program's pretty heavy. You had a healthy work program in 2021 and you have a 1920 leftover work program delays. So there's a, a ton of work. And that's why we are, I'm basically forcing through agreement that council, when you want to add something that was not considered on the work program, you have to trade something out of equals.
Right. Okay, my impression of this item was the Housing Commission would work on this item. Would, so this item would take staff time also?
Yes, tremendous amount.
Absolutely, Councilmember Child, Housing Commission doesn't have staff. So it falls under the Community Development Department. So our department will be working on these items.
Okay, so who, Rod, were you done?
I, I completely lost the letter, I don't know, I'll have to find.
But John was right, the email's the same as the letter, it doesn't matter.
Well, I, with all due respect, I haven't been able to read either, but what I saw was concerning to me. So I, I, here's, here's where I am on this. Have we heard, have, we've heard from the public, have we?
We did.
Fine, so where I'm at is, I think this ought to be redirected to the Housing Commission to, to set, to make a recommendation to council that we're going to make a substitution. I'm fine with a survey, but I'm, I am concerned about this input. And I, you know, I think we need to be proactive in actual steps we take. I don't mind getting, collecting data from residents, but honestly, you know, we had a housing crisis before the pandemic and it's getting worse. So, uh,
Really?
You know, we need, we need, we need some permanent solutions to this problem. And with the letter we've received and also the public input this evening, I, I can't support making this substitution. We recommend we refer it to the Housing Commission.
Okay, I will go now then. Okay, so I've been in Cupertino since about 1999. In 2005, we had Measures A, B, and C. In 2006, we had Measures D and E. In 2016, we had C and D. We had referendum signatures in 2018. With such a huge margin that opposed Tier Two, that no one from the developer that was affected by that even spoke up against the city council adopting the referendums on the night we did it. We had an election in 2018. We saw what happened, the candidates backed by the developers all solidly lost. So a survey's great, but if we don't know what the residents want by now, we're just not paying attention. John has had the long, the walks with residents, Leon has had coffee talks with residents. So, you know, a survey's great, $24,000, it's not a lot of money. I'd be fine with doing that. I kind of like Rod's idea regarding involving the Housing Commission. Now, on the other hand, I look at Dianza. Measure G is providing $898 million to Foothill Dianza. Someone else pointed out, which is absolutely true, the County Office of Supportive Housing should be doing this. They should be funding the student housing, helping with it. The county takes a huge share of property taxes. You know, we get a pittance compared to other cities. That money should go to the city. If it went to the city, we could do a lot more in terms of helping with unhoused residents, including Dianza students. So, you know, give us our fair share of property tax revenue and we'll have the money to support unhoused residents, including Dianza students. I also point out, when I moved here, well, I lived here, I mean, I worked here even before I lived here. And I remember what a great neighbor Dianza was to the city of Cupertino. Every year, we had Dianza Days. We had Flint Center that provided a venue that was adored by the community. And tonight, we're here, Dianza didn't even bother to show up so they could answer our questions. They didn't bother to send a single person. I mean, that's unacceptable. So I would favor sending this back to the Housing Commission for comment. But I'm also fine with putting the Dianza item, taking it off this year's work plan, putting it on next year's work plan and making that substitution to do the housing survey. So that's where I'm coming from, but I am absolutely fine with getting the opinion of the Housing Commission on this. But, you know, even so, you know, we make the decisions here. The Housing Commission could say something, we don't necessarily have to accept their, their guidance either. But I don't feel the housing survey is necessary. I feel we already know what the residents want. They have, have had every opportunity to communicate with us. And that's where I am. Percy.
Okay, so, you know, I, I think one thing that has gotten overlooked in the comments that we've had so far is the fact that it probably is a good idea to keep something conversational going with Dianza College, Foothill Dianza, from a monetary perspective. They have, as, as Leon pointed out, $898 million of money through the year 2052, which really comes out to more than a billion dollars because of servicing well over a billion, actually. And so if you, if you do look at their rather extensive list of items that they can be spending that money on, Leon is also correct in stating that housing is in there in this very long list. In the middle of, I polled the measure and the operative item in the list is Plan, Construct, Acquire or Contribute to Affordable Employee and Student Housing Units. Now, if we already have funding and an item on there that speaks to this, it doesn't have to be necessarily the Home Match Program because we do have more, more general language there with regard to just having a conversation. You know, I, I just, I don't think that we're well-served by, by removing it. I, I think we need to keep that presence in that conversation, especially given the fact that this is their more well-attended community college within, within our jurisdiction. And it is, it is just a very massive amount of, of funding over the course of the next 30 some odd years. So, you know, 50,000 compared to hundreds of millions of dollars, you know, why don't we just cut that in half? And then allocate 25,000 or so up to that amount for, for a housing survey. I, I don't hear anybody really objecting to having that input from our community. I, I would support it because I do think that it is important to get a sense of what our residents are, are looking for specifically. And I think the, I think our staff has done good work in keeping this within a reasonable budget. Honestly, I, I can't imagine that Dianza College is looking at the $50,000 and going, well, you know, we really want that $50,000. I, I think it really is just an indication that we want to engage in this conversation, which also speaks to the idea of reestablishing those connections and that relationship between our jurisdiction and, and the community college. So I would propose that we, we keep Item Six on Housing in our work plan, you know, as pertains to, you know, housing potentially for Dianza College students. And have that budget. There was an indication from our staff that we could also revisit this next year, perhaps expand it out in addition to the possibility of removing it and then adding it back. I think we just, let, let's stay in the conversation and let's go forward with the, the housing survey as well. But, but I, I don't, I agree with people who say that we don't really need to go back to the Housing Commission. I, I think the ideas have been discussed out there. We have our preferences from our council, we have the input from staff, and we have input from the public. I, I just, I, I don't, I don't see why we're well-served by, by not paring down, you know, the one that's already on our work program. And it's not as if we haven't had notice with regard to the appetite from our council for a, a survey as to what our residents are looking for. So, you know, I, I would support, I would, I would support trying to go, you know, with, with both. I can bring a motion to that effect if you'd like.
I just wanted to ask before you do that, I didn't think it was just the money that was the issue, that 24 or 50,000 dollars. I thought it was that we don't have the staff time to do both.
Well, I, I would, I would have the staff make the time. I, you know, to, to the extent that we, we stay in the conversation and they really feel constrained on other tasks, then have them pare down the amount of time commitment. But at least stay in this conversation for, for, for this fiscal year, going up through June of 2021. Because, you know, this is a very significant amount of investment in our community, even if it is a relatively minor fraction of this near billion dollars. There is going to be something that impacts our, our, our buildings, our available space. And so, you know, why not, why not, why not keep in this conversation? You know, we, we spend probably more time on, you know, if not the majority, at least a significant number of items on our agenda every couple of weeks, such that, you know, you can look at this one item on our work program. I mean, if not, if we don't at least have like consolidated several hours of conversation with, with Dianza College about something so significant over the course of a year, then I'm not really sure, you know, if, if we're, if we're doing the relative math here. I, I mean, we, we need to keep in this kind of inter-jurisdictional conversation because this is such a massive source of funding.
Vice Mayor, may I make, ask the staff a question?
Answer the question that I had about the staff time.
Well, so that's what I was going to ask in a different way, though. I was going to ask Carrie and, and Ben, what does 25, so you take the $50,000 that's currently funded. funding that particular work program item, does $25,000 get you anywhere, or is there a threshold by which it's just not going to do anything?
I think, depending on the program direction from DeAnza, and whether the $25,000 or the $50,000 is enough seed money to initiate or to support any program that they have right now. We haven't seen a direction for a program yet. So, we thought that's a good opportunity to kind of swap this item out. We'll continue to be engaged with the college, of course, as evident with Carrie's conversation with them yesterday with the Associate Vice President. So, that's sort of our plan.
Yes, I didn't want to leave council with the impression that we'd just stop talking to them. We would just not be, I'll put it this way, we'd just not be proactive in our contribution. We'd react to whatever they give us.
I have a question. So, the $25,000 was for program costs, not staffing costs, right? So, you were planning to spend $25,000 on consultant or something?
$50,000.
$50,000 on what? Survey? Consultant? What, it was the program cost? It wasn't staffing cost?
Carrie, you're muted, but I think you got the answer to that one.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the seed money, in talking with DeAnza and doing some initial work for the work program, it was determined that the seed money would go to pay for the Catholic charities, like background checks and eligibility determination, and basically ways to link students with a Home Match Program. And that was a lot of staff effort to move that information forward, and then DeAnza had conversations themselves with Catholic charities. We just had some initial thoughts, and that's where we came up with the $50,000.
So, it was assuming you find a nonprofit to host the Home Match Program. That will be the seed money for that program. But you don't have the program provider identified yet, right?
Correct. One of the things I believe they indicated in the letter is that when DeAnza learned about the Catholic Charities program, they acknowledged they wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel, that they would just model an existing program and buy into that.
Shouldn't this program be funded by DeAnza? It's for their students. Why is that funded by us?
That's for council to help us answer that one. I mean, I don't disagree that it's DeAnza.
Does someone have a motion?
Okay. So, okay.
I'll make a motion.
The program is actually, the $50,000 was meant for a program cost when we figure out how to do the Home Match Program, which we haven't figured out, right? And then, likely, if we do the survey, that means survey will take a higher priority, but then the Housing Commission can continue to work with DeAnza, and hopefully, this forces them to take in this program, and we support them. And when they figure out how to do the Home Match Program and the cost, then we can bring it to the council and say, "Here is a program, this is how much it's going to cost." I think it would be for more than $50,000. I remember the Berkeley program was more expensive. So, when we know the cost, it will come back, and then we will know how much DeAnza would pay, how much we will pay, and then this will be a joint program. It seems we can look at the budget then, right? So, right now, perhaps the direction from the council would be the homeless program for DeAnza could be driven by the Housing Commissioner with minimal staff time, so that DeAnza College could take the lead on this program, since it's really their program. We are supporting. And then, in case it's to a point where we do need more city staff time invested, then we will see if we want to have a program. And I think this council can decide, because the council did, for example, cut certain items from the Library Commission without even consulting them. I think this is just what we do when we work on the work program. And now, we can, this will just be shifted to an item that's taking minimal staff time, but we encourage a Housing Commissioner to form some, from task force, subcommittee to engage DeAnza. Hopefully, DeAnza will be taking the lead, and we are supporting. And it's for the survey. I think, yeah, we know, you think, the mayor thinks he knows what the residents want, but then I find out the staff didn't know what we want. The staff doesn't know what the residents want. So, this survey is important, and also, this would be talking about what do we put on Bach Road? What do we put on a lot of other commercial sites? For example, Monta Vista, across from Post Office. For example, we have the nursery that's near the police station, right? That commercial zone, we don't have any plan for that. What we should put there? There are a lot of areas we haven't even considered, and we need to look at all potential development sites in Cupertino and figure out what's suitable, what people think is suitable there. So, this is something I don't think I know, because that's never been discussed even in life.
Does someone have a motion?
It's okay.
Yes, I'll make a motion. Does someone have a motion?
I have a motion. You know, we have spent so much time on this. I suggest we refer this to the Housing Commission to make, to go look at this further and make a recommendation to council. We're three whole weeks into the new year, and already we're varying the work program. I mean, let them help us. That's my motion.
I have a replacement motion.
Yeah. I'd like to see if Darcy will make a motion on what he described, which he's very eloquent with what he outlined, and so I'd like to consider that.
Thanks. I appreciate that. So, you know, just trying to consolidate everything that's been discussed. I'm looking at the project objective in our work plan for the housing program for DeAnza College students. There are three sentences there, and I'm going to focus on the middle sentence, because I think the first and the third sentences are fine the way they are. There are four solutions for homeless and housing insecure students, and the third one is investigate partnership with DeAnza on student housing and transportation solutions. I think those are things that we should be doing anyway in a long-term basis for the good of the overall community. But the second sentence reads, quote, "Assist in the development of a housing program for homeless students." And that seems to be very specific as to the Home Match Program in terms of how we're interpreting it right now. I would suggest, as a first part of my motion, that we modify that sentence and the objective to read, quote, "Assist as necessary and appropriate in the longer-term development of a housing program for homeless students," and end quote. I'm looking at the fact, again, that DeAnza College is looking, as well as Foothill, is looking prospectively at more than $1 billion of taxpayer money, and if we set aside something, and the expectation is certainly not that we pay for everything or anything nearly that much, but the expectation is that we symbolize our commitment to working together, then I think it is, you know, something that we can just, you know, set aside that half of the budget for this particular item, and don't really, you know, say, "Look, this is something that needs to get spent in this next year on this particular program." So, I would say, let's modify that second sentence. That's the first part of my motion. Second part of my motion is that we take that other half and we allocate it to a housing survey with the specific form of the survey to be determined on a recommendation of our Housing Commission. So, I suggest that we refer that portion of what we're examining here. I do agree with the idea that we do have a Housing Commission. Let's get their input as to what makes sense. Let's work with them as well as to what we're trying to achieve for the community. So, that's my motion. Two parts. Modify the second sentence of the project objective in our current work program. Second part, direct a housing survey and direct as to the specific selection, the Housing Commission to make a determination and recommendation as to which one we select.
I'll second Darcy's.
Can I add a friendly amendment for efficiency? Because I think John has worked on certain version of the survey, and I think Housing Commission has not worked on any survey before, and you are asking them to start something that's totally new. So, maybe I think it's proper for maybe a subcommittee of council members to work with the Housing Commission on the survey.
I don't know that Darcy's motion included that. What he was saying was to...
Making an amendment, a friendly amendment, to form a subcommittee of council members to work with Housing Commission on the housing survey.
I'm sorry, did you, I need to finish my sentence, that Darcy's motion was for them to just choose which method we'd be, unless you correct me if I'm wrong, Vice Mayor.
No, you're correct. My original motion was to refer this to the Housing Commission for a recommendation as to which one of these options would be preferable. However, I can't accept Councilmember Chow's friendly amendment with regard to the formation of a subcommittee from council to work with our Housing Commission to that effect. I don't know if that would be a matter of trying to still come up with a recommendation in terms of the suite that's presented to us, or to add, you know, perhaps some other ideas as well, and to come up with a new recommendation as to how the survey should be conducted. But I think it would be fine to have, you know, a couple of non-majority representatives from our council to have some interaction in seeking some input. Although, I don't know, it might be cleaner just to look for a recommendation, because we do have, we do have a trio of options that our staff has prepared for us. So, and without the Housing Commission having convened, we don't know whether they could perhaps also designate a couple of people in a subcommittee to work with, our council members, to, you know, come up with a recommendation. Maybe that would...
That would be nice, two Housing Commissioners and two City Council Members.
I will say that, without looking at this further, that might be a meeting that needs to be publicly noticed, so. When you have two subcommittees from different bodies who are making recommendations to the city council, so, which is fine, just letting you know that that might be the result.
Okay. So, how about if we refer to the Housing Commission or the Commission to designate members of a subcommittee formed between two of their members and two of our city council members to make specific recommendations as to the form of the housing survey? Is that...
The recommendations to the council?
It would make a recommendation to the council as to the final format. For the housing, is that acceptable, John, as a second? Okay. I heard something through this.
And I believe then the council should designate this subcommittee at this meeting, then?
I would nominate Councilmembers Chow and Willie for it.
Tom, we can't hear you.
Yeah, John, I think we understood that you would be happy to be on that subcommittee because your audience is really bad.
Yeah.
Sounds like it's been a second.
I'll be happy to assist.
Great. Can you call the question, please?
Sure. I would like to weigh in.
Oh, go.
Yeah, I don't see designing a survey by committee. I think you hire professionals. If the direction is, let's get, you know, some input, fine, but I think we ought to be letting a professional write the questions in a way that, you know, gives us real information rather than a predetermined outcome. And I think this whole thing ought to simply be refers to the Housing Commission as a whole. We bring them on, we ask them to do work. What's the point of having two council members? So, I'll be, I'm going to go to bed soon, but I, you know, you're going to go do this. I just think, you know, we've wasted an awful lot of time this evening on something that really ought to be in the wicket of the Housing Commission. So, I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Yeah, I want to say, I do appreciate that input. I think it very well may be that the subcommittee comes back and, you know, if we vote for it in favor and recommends that we do, you know, hire a professional, you know, survey maker to generate the questions.
I'll just put a fine point on it. If the city, if it goes out as a city survey, it has to be done by a professional.
Yeah. But the professional still needs direction, because we had a survey earlier this year done by a professional, and then we get negative feedback. So...
Yes, and not to put a firepoint on it.
Direction on what to survey on, right?
Yes, but city staff would be directing that consultant after we get input. However, what I would say is that city survey went wrong for a number of reasons that I can discuss with you all later. Some modifications were as a result into that disastrous survey. So, I would, I'll take that discussion offline with...
Okay. The question's been called. Can we vote?
Can I just clarify? Sorry. Okay. I thought it was the subcommittee was going to make a recommendation about the four options in the staff report for the survey. And so, if it's broader than that, maybe we should clarify it, but I believe that's up to the...
I cannot see the staff report. What's the four options?
It's like...
Carrie or Ben, can you summarize? I don't know.
Sure, I can do that while Carrie finds your button. Option one is an open town hall register user, and that's a registration requirement for all participants to access the survey. What we heard last time from council is that you wish for the survey to be more exclusive to the Cupertino residents. So, these options are a kind of crafted research in that particular manner. So, option one, again, open town hall register user. Option two, survey monkey with a password, similar to number one, but it'll have a single password assigned to that particular survey with a notification going out to a resident via mail letter or email blast. Option three will also be a survey monkey, but those will require a unique IP address. The address of all devices will be used to take the survey, are logged, and once a device has been accessed, the survey is locked out, so you cannot take the survey again with the same device. Option four is a paper survey, which addresses some of the comments we heard today about a particular population of our community. This paper survey, excuse me, will be created with a unique ID associated to each household. The survey is then mailed out to households with a request returned to the city. So, those are the four options.
Oh, that's not what I had in mind for the subcommittee to work on. What I had in mind was for the subcommittee to look at what questions we want to ask the residents, because housing survey, you can ask a million different questions, and if you just give it to the consultant, you might not, they might not ask the questions that we want to ask. So, that's why I thought John had a list of questions he already designed, he already got feedback from multiple residents, something he has in mind that he wants to know from more residents.
Well, I would also suggest that...
It's the content of the survey that the subcommittee should work on.
Yeah, you're not starting from scratch either, because the survey that went out was as a result of councilmember voting. So, it's not scratch.
So, yeah, so we had something already that John and I are more familiar with. Then I thought the subcommittee can then further refine that and say, "Here is something we'd like to see," and then hand it to the professional. and say, "Here is something we'd like to see," and then hand it to the professional to make a professional survey. But we all start with, "Here is the content we'd like to see, questions we'd like to ask." That's what I had in mind for the subcommittee.
Right, and my motion encapsulated both sides of this. It was intended to talk about recommendations as to format as well as content.
Okay, great.
All right.
I'm so sorry to keep interjecting. We don't have a problem with a subcommittee or how we want to get the input on the questions so long as we, the city staff, work with the consultant to properly administer a survey. So I would refrain from designing it, because that's really up to professional consultants, and give us input on the X number of questions you want asked. I think that's how we limit it.
John, you know, of all those options, the only one that's safe is that last one.
It's paper. That's why we offered it.
I've got 12 devices in my house with different IP addresses, where I can use a VPN and get 50 more, and the Wimby's will do that, so it needs to be the paper survey.
That's what I, that's what staff would recommend. Oh, my God.
Okay, well, let's call a question. Hopefully, we can get back with the subcommittee in the next several sessions, and then we'll take it from there. But let's see if we have support for the motion.
Yes, I definitely second the motion.
All right, go, Kirsten.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
No.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
No.
Motion carries with Mr. Sharp voting no.
All right, wonderful. Let me go back to the agenda. Well, actually, we've been going for three more hours now, so let's, I need to take five. Let's, 108.